Alright, everybody, welcome. Welcome up and come on in. Happy New Year. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council Meeting. Let's go ahead and start off with a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Bishop?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temloa?
Here.
Councilmembers Olson?
Here.
Button Court?
Here.
And Alarcon?
Here. We have a quorum.
Alright, thank you very much. It takes us to item number three, Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Mayor Pro Temloa, will you please lead us in that?
Please stand. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Alright, that takes us to item number four, our presentation. Alright, so we're gonna give this certificate of recognition to a young man named Jordan Ramirez. So, he walked from Lancaster Sheriff's Station to the Palmdale Sheriff's Station in appreciation of our deputies and in honor of Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer. Would you come on up, Jordan? Is Jordan here?
He's outside still.
He's getting...
Okay, here he comes. Give him a second to get in here. It's packed house tonight. I'll go ahead and start by reading a little bit of the certificate of recognition. So, Jordan Ramirez, he's a young Marine. He's a ninth grader at West Covina High School. So, it really is amazing, you know, especially a ninth grader this day and age when the narrative in law enforcement can sometimes be less than supportive, but this young man got out there. He's taking part in trying to show his support, do right by the country, take part in civic leadership by being part of the Young Marines Program. It really is remarkable. Must be some way to get in out there. Can we expedite them? Can we get them? Okay. Yeah, I wonder who it is. Alright, there he is. Let's give him a big round of applause. There he is. Jordan Ramirez. We're waiting for you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your efforts. This is a certificate of recognition from the City of Palmdale and the entire city council. I'm just gonna read this to you. Here, come over to the side so we can get some good photos. So, presented to Jordan Ramirez, young Marine, ninth grader at West Covina High School. We would like to extend our heartfelt appreciation for the act of honor you have shown towards our deputies and Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer by walking from the Lancaster Police Station to the Palmdale Police Station. Your bravery, notability, and dedication to supporting our community is highly commendable. Thank you very much. I've been told you have a bit of a remarkable story, so I'm gonna give you a couple minutes to tell everyone about yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Before we begin, I would like to, I'd like it if we could all take a moment of silence for Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer. Thank you. I'd like to thank the City of Palmdale's mayor and the city council for the invitation. My name is Jordan Ramirez. I'm Lance Corporal with the Southland Marines located in the San Gabel Valley. For over three years now, I've been doing appreciation and honor walks across our beautiful country for our heroes, military, and first responders. I've been asked many times on how do I get the energy or the strength to have walked over eight hundred miles so far? That's simple. I see many of you smiling of cheers and joy on many wonderful people during my walks. And that's what gives me the strength to continue going farther and walking another eight hundred miles. It's bittersweet when I do honor walks for fallen heroes. When I arrive to police or fire departments, I can see the pain in their eyes. I know they're happy for what I'm doing, but deep down inside, I know they're hurting. I wish I could do more. I wish I could make their pain go away. And I wish everyone else here that we could turn back time and prevent it from happening. At my young age, there's many things I don't know or don't completely understand yet. But one thing I do know, that if we can be strong in our community and unite as one after a tragedy that has happened, then why can't we do this before? We can be one. We can be strong now. This is how I think we continue to honor our fallen heroes. And thank you, everyone here. And thank you, Deputy Klinkenbumer, for your service. May you rest in peace.
Thank you so much. You're a remarkable young man, and the significance of what you're doing is huge. And our community appreciates it, and I'm sure the communities across the entire country, you're doing this and appreciate it. So, thank you very much. This is just a little something from the City of Palmdale. Show our appreciation. Alright, thank you. Next up, City Manager. Do we have any items that need to be pulled from, or removed from today's agenda?
We need to remove 6.12.
Okay. Let the record reflect and show that we are removing 6.12 for a later date off the consent calendar. Alright, City Clerk, will you please read the Public Comment Code of Conduct into the record?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we will request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by the speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Alright, thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmembers, would we like to pull any of the items from the consent calendar?
I need to pull 6.6.
Okay, 6.6.
6.6 is the one I was gonna pull.
Alright, we got three for 6.6. Okay, City Clerk, will you state which items have been pulled from the record, or pulled from the consent calendar, please?
6.6 and 6.12. Was removed.
Has been pulled and 6.12 has been removed, okay.
Right.
Okay. So, that moves on to public comments. City Clerk, will you read the public participation statement before we begin the public comment section?
Now is the time for public participation on items listed on the consent calendar, Section 6, Appointments, Section 7, Any New Business Section, the Direction to City Attorney, Section 9, and Close Session. Each speaker is allotted two minutes in total for the entirety of the above sections.
Okay, great. City Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, and Council, we do.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and get started with public comment.
Rich Gallego.
Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. Pretty simple tonight. Enough is enough. I'm speaking on 9.1 and Ms. Alarcon's conduct, or misconduct, I should say. Palmdale Freedom Coalition warned about this over a year ago, and everything that we said has been validated. Her conduct has been reprehensible. It's an embarrassment to the city, and it needs to stop. My position and the position of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition is that if she cannot be summarily removed from this council, she should resign. And if she doesn't have the character to do that, then I would like to see the council, we would like to see the council, limit her participation to voting and showing up at meetings, and that is it. Because she's become a liability to the citizens of this city. If something tragic happens while she's driving to or from some appointment, doing city business, you know, I don't have to paint a clear picture here. This is a huge liability legally for the city. Even if it was, and God forbid, because I would like to see her get help, if it was a solo accident and only she was harmed, I have every confidence that her family would sue the city. And as a citizen here, tax-paying citizen here, I'm not willing to have my tax dollars put at risk by something that could be avoided so easily. If the council does not do everything in its power to either remove her from the council or limit her participation, you will be complicit in anything that happens from this point forward. And there is no defense. As I said, we've been telling you about this for over a year. I need you to act very strongly and do the right thing tonight and repair this city's reputation. If you've followed social media lately, you know that many of the citizens here are not just blaming Andrea Alarcon. They're blaming the entire city council. And it's not fair, but it's a fact. Please do the right thing.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jess Enos.
Good evening, Mayor Bishop and councilmembers. My name is Jessica Enos. I am the leader of AV Parents for Education and Mom Army in Alabala. As a wife, a mother, and citizen of Palmdale, I'm here to demand Andrea Alarcon's resignation. Ms. Alarcon, there is no more grace this community is willing to give you. You have not once, not twice, but repeatedly have violated the oath you took for your seat and that you were elected for. Your actions are an embarrassment to our city and quite honestly disgraceful. You not only put your life in danger, but you risked the lives of all of us on the road when you drink and drive. I know many in this room can say that they have lost someone or know of someone who has been killed by a drunk driver. All we know of are the handful of times that you've been caught. How many more times have you driven drunk that you weren't caught for? City Council, if she is not willing to remove herself, you need to do all that you can do to get her removed from her seat. She is not someone we want representing this city. She really does need help. And by you continuing to allow her to operate in any capacity for the city is a liability for us that we are not willing to, that we cannot afford to have. I am also asking that you create a stronger code of conduct that brings forth consequences for council members who violate this code, including removal of seat. Thank you.
Alright, next speaker?
Yulga Vargas.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Congratulations, Mr. Austin Bishop. Very qualified, with your job as mayor. Known you guys for many years. I couldn't find anybody more trustworthy than you. Laura Button Court, awesome leader. Thank you for your leadership and thank God for our prayers come true and you're feeling better. Eric Olson, I've been keeping track of what you're doing, and I really appreciate your efforts in this city and working with everybody else. And Andrea Alarcon, you're young, talented, extremely educated, but just like my dad, he had a problem. Look at Donald Trump. His brother had a problem. That's why Donald Trump and his family, children, none of them ever touched a sip of champagne alcohol, even smoking, drinking. It's nothing personal. Honestly, I really have high respect for you. You're an attorney, very intelligent person, and I just hope you give prayer, you get some help. It's gonna be a good year, this 2024. We're gonna have a new president. This country is gonna be a better place, rather than some 6.3 million people this year, 33,000 last month. Thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker?
Michael Ross.
Hi, my name is Michael Ross, and I do want to address Ms. Alarcon. In 1985, I was involved in a drunk driving accident. A drunk driver ran a red light and almost killed me. I had to have my arm put back in place, my left arm. I had over 200 stitches. I had a major head concussion. My girlfriend at the time had a broken leg, ripped kidney. Friends in the back were horribly hurt. People at the scene pronounced me dead. So, drunk driving is a very personal thing to me, and it almost killed me. Within a second, I would have probably died. The guy's alcohol level was off the charts, and he ended up getting help. He ended up getting sober, which I thank God for. I want you to know, we do pray for you. We do. And we're more concerned about you as a human being than as a council member. You're a precious person in God's sight. And we do care for you, but there comes a point where you have to kinda really look at what you've done and the possibilities of things that could happen if you don't get help. So, as a man, a person who deeply believes in God and faith, I'm asking you that you get help. Step aside for a while, get your life straightened out. I'm sorry that it's so public for you. I really am sorry about that, but that's where we're at. So, just, I ask you, please really consider that and consider that on behalf of you and your family and your community. Thank you.
Alright, next speaker?
Abraham Salcedo. Abraham Salcedo?
Yeah, let's go ahead and go to the next person.
No other speaker cards for this section.
Oh, is that it? Okay, so let's go ahead and give them a minute to come in. I think he's coming in right now. Okay. Then you can have your... Hello, sir.
Hello, everybody. It's pretty interesting out there. So, today, I just come as a concerned citizen. And we know you guys are gonna talk about the issues with Ms. Andrea Alarcon. And, you know, drunk driving is a real serious issue. I had pastor, I'm a pastor at a church, and we had a pastor just last year in June, passed away from a motor vehicle because the other driver was drunk. And it's uncalled for. There's no reason for it. We've come here and we've spoken on certain issues, even though, you know, you guys are in a tough position, even though, you know, nobody wanted to hear it, nobody wanted to talk about it. It's a serious issue now. Now, it's an issue where it's Palmdale's tax dollars that can be, not only that, but people's lives are in danger out there. You know, we need to really take the time to be serious, and I know your guys' hands are strapped with some of the code of conduct stuff that's put forth, but I think it's time to do something. When we look at what's going on and what's been happening, and we see that in the, from May till December of last year, there's been five different instances where you have public intoxication, disorderly, down to the DUI. I mean, there's a track record here, and I think you guys have a tough decision to make, but I'm hoping that you guys will do the right decision. And we pray for you, Ms. Alarcon. We know that you're in a tough position, and we know that this is a tough thing, but in all reality, it's about you and taking care of you and making sure that nothing happens to you as well at the same time. And I hope that you guys are friends and partners and really look out for her and find something better for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
April C. April? Maria?
Hello, everyone. I've never encountered a human being more devoted to helping others and who possesses an enormous amount of empathy and compassion for others as I've seen in Mrs. Andrea Alarcon. She literally saves lives. She saved my mother-in-law's life. And by extension, that act of tremendous kindness saved and positively influenced my life and the life of my family. As demonstrated by her consistent actions, she has always elevated, sorry, I need a moment, empowered, helped, and given a voice to those unable to speak for themselves. She has navigated complex obstacles that are purposely erected to block those that are less fortunate and underprivileged. I've witnessed Ms. Alarcon endure a tremendous amount of stress, difficulties, and hardship in order to save the lives of battered women and their children. Not once has she hesitated to use her diverse and robust knowledge, skillset, and talent towards fighting the battles of others in upholding their voting rights, protection of the elderly, and other victims of countless unjust circumstances. Shame on those detractors who offer nothing of actual meaningful value to instill any benefit to the lives of others, but instead choose to rant, speak empty, and useless words that only serve to propagate hate and divisiveness. Unless you've carried the burden of others, endured countless sleepless hours and.
Thank you, that's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Karen Lindsay. Maria and Danielle.
Esteemed council members and councilwomen, Andrea Alarcon, Agents of Change stands before you today with heavy hearts with concern and a desire for healing in our community. The recent incidents involving drinking and drabbing have undoubtedly shaken us, reminding us of the fragility of life and the consequences of our actions. We do not condone her actions behind a wheel, however, she deserves peace in her recovery. We acknowledge the support that she is courageously obtaining for her recovery. We believe in her character as she has demonstrated her dedication and, uh, commitment amongst the community, knowing that she will triumph in her recovery and follow her word. Andrea, your commitment to your community through your countless support and showing up even in the, a couple weeks ago, where you were still going through your own struggles, you supported the mother of Gore, the four-year-old who was killed on Central Highway. You show up for your community and you have supported it countless of times. It's our time to support you. You, let us foster an environment of accountability and redemption, recognizing that the journey of healing requires consistent application of our moral compasses. Thank you for your time and consideration. And please do support those that have been supporting the community. Wishing you all a safe New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Justin McIntosh.
Still outside? He's gotta be here somewhere. We'll give him a minute to come in.
Victoria Reyes. The individuals that I called can still come up. So I called Justin McIntosh, Mario Presents, and Vict-
Okay, here we go. Hello, sir.
Hey, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Justin McIntosh. I'm also an avid, uh, member of an Alcoholics Anonymous program. So, um, I've known Andrea for quite some time and I worked alongside her in the community. And, um, you know, like I understand that we have, uh, a lot of wreckage of our past to deal with, a lot of, uh, people that would like for us to go into rehabilitation or a lot of do things like this. And, you know, we end up losing our jobs, we end up losing our families, we end up losing a lot of things, right? And I've noticed that the program does really work for a lot of us, you know, and I show that, um, Andrea does have the willingness and patience to be able to do something like that. And I've noticed that she has taken, you know, the opportunity to be able to actually go and attend meetings and be able to actually, you know, seek help. So, I mean, a lot of this stuff, you know, I'm not really aware of as far as like how the Chamber of Commerce actually works. You know, my mom used to be the president of the town council in Nicalet. And I messed up, you know, I had a track record, but I worked hard at it. I really did. And I really feel that, you know, it'd be detrimental to the community because she advocates for a lot of us, you know. I've gotten awards through Mike Garcia, Tom Lackey, Tom Dally, you know, and I would trade that all, you know, for just another day of sobriety. I really would, because it's, uh, very precious to me. And I notice that, you know, everybody deserves a second chance. So thank you for letting, for hearing me out.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker.
We expect our elected officials to be model citizens. We lift them up onto pedestals and strive to be like them. But when they stumble, we're reminded that they are human. We should have compassion and understanding, but in no way should we enable or allow behavior to continue without consequence. What Andrea is doing is not only dangerous to the community, but also damaging to our city. Andrea, an employee of Shankman and Hughes, has been helping the law firm sue cities across California into districts, a district she now represents. The cities of Hemet, Upland, Costa Mesa, and Hesperia have all moved to election districts along with many others. If this doesn't scare you, the fact that according to her 770 paperwork, she also consults for Tress S. What does this company do, though? It's headed by retired Senator Richard Polanco from California Advocacy, a boutique advocacy group based out of Davis, California. When I reached into the business license of these organizations, I found a lot of cloak and dagger. Tress S.'s principal agent is Seema Shaw from Pasadena, California, who is a CPA. What work does Tress S. do? The website for the California Advocacy has a business license that leads to online press. That license was suspended by the Franchise Tax Board and Secretary of State in 2002. A name search finds California Advocacy's principal agent is in fact Evelyn Pineda from Northern California. How does a known alcoholic become so untouchable that they can be cited multiple times for drunken behavior, allowed to submit their paper, election paperwork 33 minutes past closing, and then keep their job? Why are Palmdale leaders allowing Andrea Shankman and her financiers to take over the city? We, the community, are asking Andrea, please resign her position today or for the council to act, limiting her ability to further harm Palmdale. For those listening at home, all the facts stated today by myself and others have been submitted into the council record and will be available via California Public Records Act request. Copies of Andrea's late election papers, 770 form DUI statistics, and the arrest record where she signed off that if she causes the death of another person while intoxicated, she will be charged with murder are all included. My name is Mario Presents and I'm the information captor for the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Uh, Mayor and Council, it looks like M. It looks like an M.
Anybody with an M, come on down.
And it's for 9.1, it is for 9.1.
Okay, so that's, okay. Anybody with an M? I know there's a couple more people out there as well. I know Mr. Flores, did you turn in a card?
Okay.
Good evening, esteemed city council members. My name is Victoria Reyes. I have sta- I have stood here several times and I stand before you today to express my heartfelt gratitude for Ms. Andrea Alarcon for her outstanding contributions to our community. Ms. Alarcon has consistently demonstrated commitment to serving in our community, always ready to assist wherever we have needed her support. In face of numerous challenges and attacks, Ms. Alarcon has remained dedicated to her role. It is important to acknowledge that, like all of us, we all make mistakes. However, it, um, it is her resilience and dedication and ability to find solutions to problems she's encountered. Would we, um, appreciate that she takes action for, for, um, things, um, in the past she's done wrong. We are genuinely pleased with Ms. Alarcon's work and believe that the leadership, that her leadership as shining example for others to follow. In a world filled with challenges, we need more leaders like her who are not only capable, but also committed to finding effective solutions to issues within our community that we face. I want to extend my gratitude to each and every one of you, uh, city council members, for taking the time to listen to my words today and your commitment and in our community. It goes a long way and we appreciate the hard work that each and every one of you does for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker.
Miguel Coronado.
Good evening. It's now the second time I have the privilege of addressing you. Congratulations, friend. So proud of you, man. It makes me feel very proud that you're up there. Eric, such a pleasure to see you. And Ms. Benencourt, I'm glad you're doing well, ma'am. Uh, we pray for you. We never actually have a real, real conversation, but believe me, I'm an advocate and we really appreciate you. My agents were just gonna talk. Uh, we don't agree with, uh, what happened with Andrea and we're very disappointed and utterly disheartened. But we love you and we support you. And, uh, what is really hypocritical to me as I sit here and listen to some of these issues is that we have my friends on the other aisle condemning a woman who has done so much in the community, but they failed to condemn their leader at the federal level who has been indicted four times. And if you live in Las Helms, you shouldn't be throwing stones, it really hurts. By the way, when I say my friends are people on this aisle are my friends and I appreciate them, they've been to my house. We love you, we support you, and, uh, initially there was an actual speech that I was gonna write and there's no need, I could just speak from the heart to let you know that, uh, you're not gonna resign. You're gonna fight this through. We have a group of people who love you, support you, aside from your family. Uh, you are for our family and, uh, you're gonna get through this. Uh, the last speaker that read very quickly, that was eloquent, it was beautiful, it was fantastic, but it has nothing to do with the matter at hand. Uh, you're gonna get the support that you need, you're gonna get the help that you're gonna need, you're gonna move forward, you're gonna march forward, and God is on your side and so are we and so is the community. Thank you for standing up for the family of our old Gore, who, as you know, uh, was shot and killed in Lancaster, but he's a Palmdale resident. And I'm sure that the rest of the council could not be there to support this family, but they send their wholehearted gratitude for stepping up and being there for them. Thank you, congratulations again.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Mayor and Council, I have no more speaker cards on this item.
Okay, anybody else? I know, I wanna make sure there's nobody outside that we're overlooking and anybody else in this chamber?
You guys need a larger building now. The city has grown since this little tiny room.
It's looking that way.
Yeah. This, dude, they tried to tell me I had to stand behind a barrier in case there's an emergency. So if everybody's stuck in here and you got these little doohickeys in the front right there.
Let's go ahead and start the public conference.
You guys should work on that. Um, anyways, so, um, let's see, congratulations, sir. Pretty close to you up here. But, um, you and I have, uh, Ms. Alarcon, we, we relate on a lot of areas that you don't even realize. And, uh, it took me a while to get a hold on my life and, um, I do wish you the best, honestly, because suffering from addiction is not fun. A lot of people don't, unless they're an actual addict and have been through that, they have no idea. So I can relate with you on that one. The only difference is you're a few years older than me, so you should be a little bit wiser. Um, it took my, my child of the age of three years old for me to pull my head out of my ass. Is when I realized it. I liked that my child, I said my child doesn't deserve an alcoholic father. Um, and personally, though, this is just my feelings, though, with all, a lot of other things that you got going on, I don't see how you could step down for 90 days to do like a rehab treatment, because that's what I did, that's what worked for me. Different things work for different people. But I went through a 90-day rehab and I've been sober since 2011, something like that. So it's different for everybody, um, you know, and hopefully you can realize that because maybe you could go places in life and excel and do far and do well, but a- as your statue right now, I don't, I don't, I don't think that you deserve the position you're in and I really don't feel that you can represent a city in the full capacity, especially with, uh, conducting your behavior the way you are and especially being an attorney. You should know the law. You, you know the law in and out, you should know it better than anybody else. And to sit here and not abide by the law and just be like, oh, scuff whatever, scuff whatever. I get it, your last DUI was a long time ago, but you're kinda lucky on that. And actually, we do have proof that since the time you've been here in this office, that you've had at least three incidents. Ventura County, you got arrested for public intoxication. Um, Glendale, you got arrested, there are allegations, but you know DUI, and then there was, uh, one with the city of Palmdale, so.
Thank you, next speaker.
Oscar Carrasco.
Hello, uh, good evening, happy to hear, so all the council members. Um, just wanna speak from the heart, to be honest. Uh, Ms. Andrea Alarcon, it is disappointing to see that the, the actions, uh, that you decided to take upon. Um, but as you do support, uh, our communities, um, we wanna support you in this moment. I understand that it is a mistake, however, it is the second time publicly and I'm disappointed in that. But I do support you in, uh, the work that you have done in this community. And so we are 100%, 100% behind you. Uh, we love you and I hope that you could get help. Um, I do wanna also mention that, uh, not everyone here on the council is a perfect human being. We've done mistakes as well. I do understand it's a big deal because personally, um, I've had a couple individuals, uh, close to me that have lost their lives due to a DUI. So, uh, like I said, again, this is the third time, I am disappointed, but I am supporting you through this because of the work that I see that you, that you put throughout this community. It is very effective and we're here to, uh, support you and help you. And whatever, uh, way you do need it, um, thank you and I hope, I hope that everyone has a good ear. Because I certainly feel from the heart that God has a, has it in for us as all Americans, um, that we're gonna be blessed this year and we can continue going forward, uh, with faith. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Felix Menendez. Felix Menendez.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Uh, felicidades, uh, Mayor Bishop. Primero que todo, pues, como todos saben, estamos aquí en solidaridad con Andrea. Los errores son de humano y no se le puede juzgar cuando ella no estaba ejerciendo su puesto como constante. Uno de los ataques más fuertes contra ella es por ser latina. Por ser una de las personas que ha levantado la voz por nuestra comunidad. Esperamos de que ustedes tomen en consideración el liderazgo, el buen trabajo que ha hecho durante el tiempo que ella ha trabajado en favor de nuestra comunidad. Estamos contigo. Esperamos verte mejor. Sabes de que cualquier decisión vamos a estar apoyándote. Y ustedes como concejales saben de que ninguno de nosotros como humanos somos perfectos. Así de que, eh, le hago el llamado a como colegas que son buscar ayuda y trabajar en conjunto con ella y brindarle el apoyo que ella merece y no ser atacada. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you, next speaker.
Brooke Sands.
Hi, everyone, my name is Brooke. Um, it's my first time I've ever done a public speaking like this. I recognize a few of you guys. I was junior Miss Palmdale 2018 and teen Miss Courtsill 2022. So I am familiar with the city and I also participated in a program called Every 15 Minutes at my high school, um, about this time last year. And it really affected me. Drunk driving, I had never had a personal experience with it. Um, but I got to sit in on one of my best friends being tried for the murder of my other best friends. And it really hit home to me and I just believe that someone who has had not one, not two, but multiple DUIs and public intoxication is not someone that I want personally representing my council or my city. And I just don't think that that is acceptable, especially as someone who has been an attorney, knows the law. I personally want to become an attorney, I'm going to school for political science. Um, and I just think that's not someone I want representing me. I'm not saying forever, maybe you can change and you can get help and there is programs for you to do. And I think the best thing for someone would be to step down from power for at least a little bit and get the help that they need because mental health and alcoholism and all of those things are very serious and something that everyone needs to take very seriously, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Richard Alberti.
Okay. It's very hard to talk on drunk driving, driving under the influence. I've never experienced it. I worked for Anheuser-Busch for over thirty years. I never once condoned drunk driving by anybody. Okay, when the council joined, the new council, Elarcon and Eric, when you guys came in, you guys felt threatened by us, PFC and others. You guys required a metal detector. I'm gonna tell you right now, I feel threatened by you by being allowed on the road, still driving and your license not taken away. If it was one of us, we would have had our license taken away. Or we could have easily been killed by you. I understand it was four other incidences here that you just got a slap on the hand here in the city of Palmdale. Okay, that's unacceptable. The city of Palmdale needs to address this issue with all matters taken into consideration. Yes, these people support, we don't support. It's okay. You're gonna have opposition and 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 then and um and in opposition and for you regardless. Okay, yes, I've seen you do your work. I've seen you out there in the public eye. But guess what? Like some of these kids stated, they're disappointed. How can you be a role model to our kids? And sit there and still do the actions you do? I found out once too. You were in a restaurant and you saw some people and you ordered a pitcher of beer and you walked out because you didn't wanna be you felt you were being watched. Okay, you're not being watched. We just happen to be in the same place at the same time. It doesn't matter because guess what? People are gonna start seeing it and they're gonna start addressing it. We're not the only ones that are addressing it. If you see the people out there on Facebook, on your city account, city council page, they're addressing it, but it's just not being addressed by the council.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Karen Lindsay.
So cold out there. Sorry, I didn't hear my name out there. Um Ms. Andrea Alarcon, with your drinking and driving, I have a big issue with that and I work for an alcohol company. I'm held accountable when I'm not at work and I'm there on a work function. I am not allowed to drink and drive. I have to drink responsibly, take an Uber. I have my son right here. If something happened to him, I would be devastated. He would be devastated. I go to work super early in the morning, the time that bars get out. Guess what? I see people like you who drink and drive on the road every day and it scares the living shit out of me. I work for an alcohol company. Do you know what that's like? Telling people, yeah, go out, have a good time, but people like you who are not responsible is a big problem. I hope to God you get help. There's some really good help out there. If you want, I'll go with you to AA. I'll sit there with you. I'll go to Alarcon with you. It's okay to say, hey, I got a problem. There's companies out there that will help. There is resources. Please use them. Not just for yourself, but for the community that you are representing. If this comes out and you killed someone, do you know what that's gonna lead to? Not just you slap on the wrist. That could be vehicle manslaughter. Think about it. That's all I have to say. Please, please, city council, do something about it. Hold her accountable. If I'm held accountable as a person who works in an alcohol industry, you need to be held accountable for your city.
All right, thank you.
Eduardo.
Sorry, I'm gonna need a present. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Buenas.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna translate in Spanish.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, um. Solamente hoy vengo eh personalmente, no vengo representando a nadie más que a mi persona.
Today I come individually, not representing anyone else.
Uh me gusta realmente he apreciado este país porque me gusta apreciar las diferentes culturas y religiones.
I appreciate this um this state, this country. I I appreciate other cultures.
Uh yo soy una persona atea y respeto mucho las religiones de los demás.
I am atheist, but I respect everybody's religion.
Sin embargo, esta noche yo considero que muchas de las personas de aquí uh deberían de considerar no creer en un Dios o en Jesús.
Tonight, I say that there's a lot of people here that they can cons- um should not consider God or Jesus.
Considero que la mayoría son lo suficientemente maduros para juzgar a los seres humanos. No ocupan un Dios.
I think they are mature enough to um they are sufficient sufficiently mature to um not consider God, but consider humans.
Yo nací en una cuna católica y conozco muy bien cómo es el cristianismo y el catolicismo.
I was born in a Catholic um home and I know what um Christianity is.
Y sé que según la religión Dios debe de juzgar por los malos actos, no las personas.
And based on that, I know that it's God that judges and not people that should judge.
Andrea, cometiste un error. Sin embargo, tu comunidad está aquí porque tú has estado para la comunidad.
Andrea, you have made an error, but the community is here for you because you have been here for the community.
Y también decirte, Andrea, que es de valientes equivocarse.
It is of brave people, Andrea, to make errors.
Pero es de valientes dar la cara a tu comunidad.
But it's also of brave people to face the community.
Y enfrentar tus errores ante la comunidad.
And face your errors in front of the community.
Yo personalmente, cuando trabajaba, cometí errores y mis compañeros me juzgaban duramente.
I personally, when I made errors at work, my coworkers judged me um for my errors.
No sé qué es lo que estés pasando tú, pero me gustaría que la gente que trabaja contigo, independientemente sean tus compañeros o en la sociedad, te apoyaran.
I don't know what you are going through, but I would personally like for those that work with you to take that into consideration and provide you support.
Y personalmente, Andrea, muchas de las veces yo me he esforzado por hablar un segundo idioma para poder hablar contigo y con muchas otras personas porque ustedes me consideran.
And personally, I have made an effort to learn how to speak another language so that I can communicate with you.
Andrea, I appreciate you. I appreciate your time, your work and you like a person. You are a big person. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh next speaker.
Thomas Lopez.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Lopez. Nineteen eighty-seven, I got a problem with alcohol. I was twenty-six years old. I was focusing the solution, not in the problem. If I was focused on the problem in that time, probably I'm not gonna be here right now and this morning. Anybody can make a mistake. Them, you guys and me, everybody. Nobody's absent for this. We need to focus on the solution. Everybody need a second chance. That's what they told me to me. But everybody looking like a stray. They don't look at the good one. I'm thirty-nine years old now, thirty-nine years, clean and sober. I remember the alcoholics anonymous and a lot of people come to me. What can I do for you? I don't look at the problem for them. I'm looking for the solution. I look at this is the problem gonna be. It could happen to them too. They're police. Have been a lot of deputies been drunk. We don't look for the problem. Look at the solution. Look at the good heart. Don't look at the bad things. That could happen to you, to them too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Marcos Alvarez. Marcos Alvarez.
I think I see him coming in.
Good evening, everybody. Mister Bishop, Mister Mayor, um if I may wait my time to allow Mister Javier Flores to finish what he's about to read.
We don't do that?
Okay, okay. Having said that, good evening, everybody and happy new year to everyone. We're at a threshold once again, but one that we can collectively solve moving forward. Beginning with the council and myself, nobody is perfect. Are we fortunate that today is a good day for whoever one is talking about? Absolutely. Could it get worse? By all means. But this is an opportunity for the entire community, no matter where you stand, to define Palmdale moving forward. What side of the fence are we gonna be on? What are we gonna bring to the table to lift someone who's experiencing that needs help? So the legacy stands here. And that is this. What did you do to lift this district and the person who represents it? Because we all, you all have gotten elected and everyone here that got elected did it personally for all the right reasons and that is to lift your community. But we can't lift the community if the council itself cannot say or do the right things when someone is being challenged. So I ask all of you and I implore to do the right thing. There is no U-turn here. I want this person is experiencing, cause I believe as intelligent as this person is, she's doing the right thing moving forward. So I implore all of this council, the community, no matter where you stand, to come together to lift Palmdale and support any move moving forward.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Several weeks ago, AV Lulak wrote a letter printed by the AV Press in which we urged Palmdale City Council to deal with Councilwoman Alarcon's behavior with compassion and empathy. We urged you to view her problem as a disease, no different from the cancer that has wreaked havoc on the health of her cohort, Councilwoman Laura Bentancourt. We saw countless city-related meetings, including council meetings, missed by Ms. Bentancourt during her illness and no one called attention to it. There's a very good reason for that. We were all trying to be compassionate and understanding of her very serious illness. That's not a lie. Oh, that's not a lie. Asking for the same compassion and empathy of Councilwoman Alarcon has proven to be too much to ask from you and the Freedom Coalition. Based on today's proposed action, it is clear that you have not been able to deal with her situation with any degree of humanity. We all know with the Freedom Coalition, why the Freedom Coalition is taking Ms. Alarcon and we know why the majority on the city council is following suit. And we know it has nothing to do with morality or ethic behavior. And how do we know that? While you try to stand on moral high ground claiming the Councilwoman Alarcon is setting a bad example, both you and the Freedom Coalition members continue to register as Republicans. That means, that means that if Trump was your party's nomination, wins your party's nomination, you will toe the line and move lock and step and vote for the most immoral man that has ever run the highest public office of this nation. So here you are condemning this person for being immoral and getting ready to support the most immoral person we any of us know. This le- level of hypocrisy is so astounding and blatant that no reasonable person can deny it. Of course, this is not.
Mister City Attorney, may I make a point of fact regarding his statement? Mister Mayor, may I respond to that statement regarding my numerous council meetings that I have missed? I would like for someone to give me the date of the council meeting that I missed. You can't. I've missed one. I've missed one since two thousand nine. It was the first week of November of two thousand twenty-one and I was in the hospital with a stroke. That is the only meeting I have missed. Yes, I've attended meetings by Zoom during COVID, just like every other council member. But I have not, due to my illness, missed council meetings. In fact, while I was mayor, I missed none. Because I didn't want to take the chance of missing a function and having Ms. Alarcon step in and take my place as the mayor pro tem. So I did not miss meetings. I did not miss events because I had no backup that I felt could support the city.
Okay, let's go ahead.
I am appalled and Javier Flores would I would, I am appalled that Javier Flores would compare cancer to drunk driving. People can drink at home and not get a car.
All right, all right. Let's go ahead and move back to public comment.
So so I didn't pick up a bottle and drink a bottle of cancer.
Let's uh next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Mayor and council, there are no more speaker slips on this item.
Okay. All right, so with that, that's gonna conclude the public comments. All right, um we're gonna move to the uh consent calendar. We've pulled item number six point six.
Move to approve the balance.
Jordan has been waiting patiently to give you a challenge coin. Can I bring him up?
Absolutely, before we move forward. And we're we're sure there's no more speakers?
No more speaker cards.
Okay, cause we had a handful of people waiting.
We wait for the uh challenge coin. I'll move to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion for Mister Loa.
I'd like to second that, please.
We have a second from Ms. Bentancourt. Let's hold that and I'll just accept the challenge coin real quick.
I hope that we're giving him one of ours. If not, we'll make sure he gets one.
So we have a motion, the second, Madam?
We have our motion and our second in.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the computer system and post the results when complete.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and uh get six, uh get a staff report on item six six.
Okay, so on six six, I pulled that item because I have to reuse myself um because of where I work.
Understood.
I'll go in back.
Uh with that, then I'll approve, uh move to approve the item.
One second, let's let's get a staff report and then. This is only for the one item. We're gonna let Sofia here just tell us a little bit about this.
Sofia is Director of Neighborhood Services. The item before you is consideration of approval of the agreement with City Gate Associates LLC of Folsom, California for the law enforcement feasibility study. The city has contracted with Los Angeles County for Law Enforcement Sheriff's Services for the past sixty-one years. The cost of providing these services has increased fifty-eight percent between two thousand thirteen and twenty twenty-three. The city has been successful in reducing its per ten thousand population part one crime rate incidence from the upper three hundred range to below the two hundred range through strong collaboration with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Palmdale Station and innovative community programs. These efforts include monthly meetings with the station captain, specialized teams, a robust single and multifamily neighborhood watch program, providing strong outreach, education to the community, engagement with community partners, collaboration with the code enforcement division and providing community service officers. In addition to the increasing cost of public safety, the city is concerned with the level of customer service. the increasing shortage of sworn personnel in LASD's response times to non-emergency calls. The city released an RFP and selected Citygate Associates LLC to provide a two-part study to analyze the current service levels of the city, public safety services and programs, the efficiency and gaps, and to provide options that should be explored, including the associated costs, cost savings, and potential liabilities. The agreement is $478,453 for six months. Staffs available for questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Sophia, for your report. Just to the audience, I intend to make some very brief remarks when we get to item 9.1, but at this juncture, we're dealing with a consent calendar, so if you care to, please bear with us as we get through our city business. But I just want to say thank you to all of you at the outset.
Okay, Eric.
Getting back to, getting back to this item.
Okay, you have something.
Is the contractor, the selected contractor, are their representatives here? I'm just, I have a couple of questions. I'm curious as to their outreach plan. It says that in the scope of work that they're going to conduct a community survey, but nothing beyond that. I just wanted to see if there was more that they can add in terms of getting input from the community in person, in terms of maybe a town hall. I think when it comes to re-envisioning law enforcement in the city of Palmdale, I think it's critical to get in-person feedback from all sectors of our community. And I did not see that in the scope of work in the contract, so I'm posing that question to you.
Working with them and putting together the outreach program of, definitely, there's a community survey, and we are looking at having them work, speak with various members of our community. So we are looking at that also, and of what to do and at what level to do that.
Okay, I just, the reason why I ask is because one of the provisions in the contract specifically says that if it's not listed in the scope of work, that they are not permitted to embark upon those efforts. And there's no specification for community outreach, including town halls and other kind of resident feedback. Specifically, re-envisioning a law enforcement entity in our city, I think, requires and demands a really robust community outreach effort. So I would like to see if maybe we can articulate some of that in, and include that in the scope of work. I don't know.
No, actually, during, during my briefing with Sophia and staff, we went over a lot of the same things when it comes to this. It's definitely in the details. We've got to pay attention to how this is executed, but
I have one other relevant question that I have. In the scope of work also, there was no reference to, there is an outline of several documents that the contractor intends to review. There is no reference in their scope of work in the contract or in their response in terms of their proposal as to whether or not they will be considering the consent decree, the US Department of Justice documents that are governing law enforcement in our community. I think those are critical components to include in an assessment of how we envision law enforcement moving forward. I didn't see any of that in, in any of their scope of work. I didn't see any consideration or even conversation about that. Did you, have you had conversations with the contractor?
Incorporate that when we, when we do the kickoff meeting, when we look at the scope in detail. So we have, we, what we did at this point is we selected based on their competency, what they've done in the past, and looking forward. We will be having a kickoff meeting with them where we will incorporate more detail of what we're looking at also. So we, I'm taking notes, and I will, we will look at that.
Okay, great. I just, from my perspective, I don't know if the, my council colleagues support my position, but I would like to see moving forward and hope that you just sort of take the, take the suggestion that we incorporate specifically that, that our contractor review all of the governing documents by the US Department of Justice, all of the compliance and review reports that have been issued annually, but also to incorporate a much more robust community outreach program so that we can get, and in, in all languages, I also didn't notice or see any, any indication that there was going to be outreach in various languages, specifically Spanish. So I just, if we can make sure that moving forward, all of that is incorporated into the scope of work, I would
One of the things to keep in mind is when we put a, a survey online, there's a translator so that it incorporates to all languages.
Yeah, my concern
So it's not just, so because there are a variety of languages, we do have to take into consideration.
Of course. My concern is simply this, that, that not everybody and not all ages communicate and feel comfortable offering feedback on an online survey. Historically, when this council has issued surveys, we've gotten maybe 100, 200 respondents at most. We have a population of 170,000 people simply conducting an online survey when we are re-envisioning law enforcement in our city, which is, public safety is the most important, arguably, one of the most important components that holds our city together. I just would like to see more than just an online survey. There are senior citizens who aren't comfortable, and there are residents who don't have access to computers that will not participate with an online survey. So I think town halls, in-person meetings, outreach, you know, maybe, maybe even do some mail surveys to certain populations, that kind of outreach, I think, is important.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I think we have, Mr. Olson, you'd like to say something on this item?
Yes, thank you for that staff report. This is something that I've been asking for, for a very long time, so I'm glad to see it come before us today. For the public benefit, I just want to state that the reason we're doing this is be, well, there's two elements to this. One, we're going to do an analysis of the contract that we have, and a look forward at different possibilities to reimagine policing within the city of Palmdale for several reasons. In the last 10 years, the contract has gone up 58%. But in recent years, we've seen the number of deputies provided decrease. And that's concerning when you pay $32 million for a service. But it's mostly concerning because it's putting fatigue on the deputies that we do have. And we want to make sure that carping, one, isn't costing us, but, two, we want to see how we can look forward to protect our deputies. I didn't ask for this because I'm looking to try to replace the Sheriff's Department. I think that they're great. I love our deputies. I asked for this because I want to come up with ways to support them, to reduce the burdens where we can, to pick up the gaps where we can, and to make sure that the city doesn't go broke in the process. So, thank you, and I look forward to the results of this.
Mr. Loa.
Just very quickly, thank you for your report. You know, we're entering into a difficult period with the financial crisis that's facing not just the city, but the state of California. And we need to look at all aspects of, of our budget. But in particular, this is, this is one of the larger budgets that we do have. Again, to reiterate what Mr. Olson has said, this is not to, in any sense, disparage to the Sheriff's Department, but we do want to get our money's worth, bottom line. And perhaps we can do it just keeping the contract, but there may be different avenues as well. I also am not advocating to replace the Sheriff's Department with, with our own police department, but we need to look at all the options, and I think that's what, this is, this contract is going to do for us. So thanks again for your report, and I look forward to the results of what may come about.
I'll allow it.
So, yesterday, yesterday was the night, it was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So if we can give a round of applause to our deputies that we do have.
I just have one last technical question for the city attorney.
Okay.
So you had a chance to review the contract that's being proposed? So can I just ask you to, to take a look at, direct you to section 19.3? Can you please read that? And I can read it out loud, but just explain to me how that paragraph is relevant to this scope of work in this contract?
If consultant is a registered professional, licensed, 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 required consultant recommendation of the actual formula to spread the cost of assessment district improvement, then consultant shall not participate in making that recommendation. If the additional element set forth in government code 87100, that's conflict, point one. Those additional elements are consultant shall receive income 250 or more for professional services in connection with any parcel included in the benefit assessment district within 12 months prior to the creation of the district, and the district includes other parcels in addition to those parcels for which consultant receives the income. In the event a conflict of interest does arise in that contract, city shall select a different consultant to recommend the actual formula to spread, to spread the, and remain the property of city. Consultant shall furnish city with its original request or reproduce the, oh, I shifted over, sorry. Cost of the assessment district improvements and the cost of such services shall be deducted from the compensation to be paid for consultant. That's an incredibly standard provision. The goal and how it applies to is if in this study, there is a need to fund additionally by a CFD or an assessment district, those are all property owner-driven. Those you do an engineering study to spread the cost fairly and uniformly. However, if the person doing the spreading is also going to be the beneficiary of the contract, that's a conflict. That's the 87100. So this presumes one of the options that Sophia may run into is a recommendation to increase or somehow augment services by community assessments. What this does is make sure there are no conflicts, that nobody's dinging the city improperly. It's entirely normal and fine.
Thank you, city attorney, always keeping us out of trouble. Well, I think this is, I think this is very important for us to move forward on. We all know, a lot of us know the challenges that are faced with law enforcement with deputy shortages and staffing and so on and so forth. A big part of this that Eric touched on is that it's going to help the city evaluate how we can work in partnership with the Sheriff's Department, use our code enforcement team to go out there, take reports, and do a lot of the lower-level crimes that the sheriffs don't otherwise have time to take care of. We want the sheriffs to handle more of the emergency calls, so to speak, especially since they're sworn deputies and they're more qualified to do so. So anyway, I think this is important as we try to reconfigure law enforcement with a rising cost. I'm willing to entertain a motion in a second.
I would like to make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Olson, a second for Mr. Loa. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting.
And please post the results when ready.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and retrieve Ms. Bentoncourt from the silent chamber. She might be further in the back than we thought. Here she comes. And she's back. All right. So it's going to go ahead and take us to item number seven, appointments. So this is going to be the nomination and appointment of planning commissioner, District 5. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and request a motion to, or nomination by Councilmember Alacron.
Thank you, Mayor Bishop. I had the privilege of having the opportunity to meet with all of the candidates who have applied to serve as our city planning commissioner for Council District 5. I want to thank each of you for your willingness to step up and serve the city of Palmdale. Each of you were incredibly impressive, and this decision was not easy to make. But with that, I would like to nominate Ms. Ayesha Jones to serve as the Council District 5 Planning Commissioner.
Okay, do we have a motion for that? That's the motion. Do we have a second for that?
Are all the applicants here? Can we hear from them?
Yeah, we can absolutely hear from them if we'd like to. Is, is anybody here that applied?
All three of them are here.
Okay, let's go ahead and give them a chance to speak.
Since I nominated you, Ms. Jones, do you want to jump in first? I think maybe, maybe just introduce yourself and a little bit of, of some of what you envision, some of the work that you've done. I mean, you've done incredible work in housing, in homelessness, and re-entry programs, domestic violence. I mean, you've, you've, you've worked the gamut, so maybe just share a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ayesha Jones. I am a native of Palmdale. I'm born and raised here. I was born at the Emerald Valley Hospital. And as she stated, I have been working in the housing and the homeless and the re-entry for years. And prior to that, I worked for LA County, and I have dibbled and dabbled in different employment positions, ranging from probation to prison to rehab, to group home, to housing, to Section 8. I've worked with Valley Oasis as a crisis intervention specialist out here with the homeless. Some of my long-term visioning for Palmdale is to see it grow and include things like homeless solutions, re-entry planning, more entertainment-type things. A lot of people come to the valley, and they're like, we have nothing to do out here. And I'm like, we have lots of stuff to do. But I'm a person that's, I love my desert, so I love the scenery. I love going up in the mountains and the poppy festival. And I find the things because I know people and I communicate with people, so I know where the entertainment is. I know where things are. But part of my vision as one of the nominees for this valley is to help have a say in what else we bring to the valley as far as entertainment, as far as buildings, as far as growth, as far as, you know, whatever things that we do have here. And outside of my social work degrees and things, I am also an entertainer. So those are the things that I'm excited to bring as one of the nominee here is to help combine those things and how we grow this valley.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
Ms. Alverdi?
Hello, my name's Erica Alverdi, and I was, I was very excited about that position because I'm a visionary. I've casted the vision for what I see for my community for the last 15 years, and I wanted to bring that to, to, to my district, District 5. But I could still do that because I have a nonprofit organization that I do that with. We work with H.Foster Youth. We work, I work with mothers and families at risk of losing their children to foster care. And I don't, I don't keep them there. I protect their future, and I help them get there. And so congratulations, Ayesha. I'm really excited for what you guys are doing. I know that I'll be part of it somehow because I live in that district, and that's my vision, is to see my district just thrive. Health, family, finances, in every way, the marketplace, very excited about what's happening with the marketplace and with the housing. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Christina, where's she at? There she is.
Hello, Christina Froggastain, former planning commissioner, current Housing Authority Commissioner. I've been involved with the city of Palmdale, I want to say, since 2008, as far as volunteering, from coaching my kids' baseball team to being a water polo mom. With the school districts, I was the head start representative for Palmdale School District when my daughter was in head start. So I've now raised a 25, 26-year-old functioning adult that was raised throughout, you know, Palmdale. I am also a member of the AVCERT response team. That was raised throughout, you know, Palmdale. I am also a member of the AVCERT response team. Um, I have facilitated, as a housing commissioner, I have facilitated the meetings to, that went on. For so many years, fifteen years, I believe, that the staff was a meeting with the residents. So that has started. We trained them also. Also, housing staff got trained with the CERT. I felt that was important. So I feel more comfortable now that we also have a competent, very qualified housing commissioner. So that's why we applied for planning. Um, I am a, uh, Pa- Palmdale Women's Club parliamentarian. I'm the secretary for the Association of Sister Cities of Palmdale. Um, I do cleanups. I've done cleanups with you two gentlemen before. Um, I, with the SBCC NAC. I facilitated a program Foster Care Bags of Hope where we tried to eliminate the plastic bags from when they go from home to home. Um, I'm a Palmdale Community Partner Event, uh, volunteer. I just recently was able to go out. Uh, this last quarter with our maintenance team to graffiti events. I actually personally got to use the washer and the painter. Unfortunately, I was the only one there. So, except for the first time, the other three times, but hopefully we'll be able to speak, you know, get more volunteers out there. Um. Let's see, I've logged over eighty hours at our veteran and rich community for the home for families. Uh, let's see, animal rescue at our park, I relay, relocated twenty-two possums. So I kinda have my hands in a little bit of everything and, um, I look forward to serving if I, you know, if I was chosen, but. Uh, I'm just there to do whatever we can for the city. Thank you.
Christina.
Thank you. As you can tell, we had a, a really strong applicant pool, each of whom, uh, is completely committed to the betterment of our city. I have no doubt that each will continue, uh, to contribute in their own right, uh, through their own respective community service work and, uh, nonprofit organizations. Uh, and I'm excited, uh, to see the energy, uh, and the vision of Ayesha Jones on the planning commission representing council District Five.
Yeah, so, uh, she has a nomination, so I'm, uh, looking for a second from the council? Any second? Seeing none dies for lack of second. Do you have another appointment?
No, if, uh, I'm not prepared to nominate anybody else, uh, in the applicant pools. So if, if there is no second, is no majority support, I would, uh, encourage that we reopen applications and continue.
City Attorney?
Continue the search.
Uh, that, that's within certainly the, the rights, the privilege of the nominating council member. I, I'm looking at your city code. If the nomination by a council member is approved by majority vote, the council member then proceed to appoint the person. Uh, if the nomination is not approved by majority vote, the council member will nominate a different candidate. Has approved by majority vote, if there is nobody ready to be nominated, then we would carry this over. To the next meeting in the hopes you could get a decision made on who to nominate.
Okay, so as, as you see it now, uh, no nomination will be made tonight?
Uh, if.
I have made a nomination. I just have not received support of the council, which is unfortunate. Yet again, uh, council District Five, uh, is being denied the opportunity, um, to have its selected representative. On this commission, on the Measure AV Commission, on various other commissions.
Mr. Curly?
Sir.
I have a question. Uh, may another council member make a nomination?
Yeah.
Now, it, it comes out, uh, from your going to districts, it becomes a, a insular district nomination. So, um, the district representative, the district council member is the one with the bully pulpit to pick somebody. Uh, again, here you have three well-qualified people. Uh, one did not make it and apparently the others aren't. Ready to be nominated, so there's really no action to be taken other than hope somebody can be nominated.
Could this continue from meeting to meeting?
Unfortunately, it could. Now, it puts the planning commission in a tough position. They end up having shorthandedness and that creates typically a, uh, the opportunity for split vote. Which is why we always have an odd number of board members, commissioners, committee members, what have you. Uh, that acts to avoid ties which are an inaction, which puts the city in sort of a stall position. Which is never a good thing. Um, and the, the hope is there would be a backup opportunity, a backup position. But evidently not.
Alright, let's.
Section two point four six point oh three oh of the Palmdale municipal, municipal code requires that I make the nomination. I'm just curious, colleagues, is Ms., uh, Ms. Ayesha Jones not qualified? From your perspective, I had the opportunity to sit down with her. I reviewed her application. Um, I'm just curious. What, what is the basis for lack of a second?
Um, I can just, I can speak for myself. Um, I think all the applicants are well-qualified. I do have personal experience. Working with, uh, Ms. Christina Frogasans. She's very well-qualified. She's been out in our community volunteering. She's been on, uh, she's been on planning commission, so she, she knows, um, she knows the lay of the land, so to speak. She knows the priorities of the city, the direction and. And I can say that, you know, I personally, um, I'm supportive of Ms. Christina Frogasans as I, I think she's been an asset to the city. I can't speak to the other council members, but what I can say right now, since we're kinda stalled on this, why don't we go ahead and, um, move this to the next meeting? So we can dig into it and take a closer look on how we're going to move forward on this. Is that all right with the council?
Uh, uh, the one question, you've got two other candidates. Uh, if they're not looking likely, uh, it might be best reopen. The opportunity for people to apply. You have three, if, if those three aren't somehow, uh, gonna make it. We don't wanna leave the commission stalled.
I mean, we, we, and I'm happy to reopen, um, to support reopening the application period. Um, I don't know that next meeting, my position is gonna change. I will continue to nominate Ms. Ayesha Jones because I believe amongst the applicants. Uh, currently before us, she is uniquely qualified to serve, uh, and represent council District Five on the planning commission. Um, so we may be, uh, unless there is a support or a second and, um, in, in the same way that I would grant the courtesy to each and one, each one of you. To nominate a representative for your district. I would like to think that I could get that sort of, uh, professional courtesy, uh, from my colleagues. Uh, but I, I, we can open, we can open the application period, fine. Um, I would imagine that, that my nomination at the next meeting would be the same.
Okay, why don't we, Mr. Olson?
Mister Attorney, the planning commissioners serve at the will of the council, correct?
Ultimately correct, yes.
So it's up to each individual district to make the nomination of their council member. But if anyone that serves on the planning commission isn't satisfactory or doing their job or anything else. Could a motion be made to remove that person by any of the council members or the one that nominated her?
I would say by any. I mean, because what we're, at that point, what you're looking at is the good of the city. And if someone isn't performing, um, the, the city doesn't have to sustain a self-inflicted wound.
I mean, are we assuming or, or sort of, uh, jumping to conclusions that Ms. Ayesha Jones will not fulfill her obligations as a planning commissioner?
No. The reason that I said that is because I didn't jump to make a second because I don't know anything about Mrs. Jones. I do know some about the others, but for the good of the city, I will second. Alrighty. So.
And now you will need a majority vote of the full council, the five of you, to confirm that.
Alright.
The second just got your foot in the door, so to speak.
Right. Okay, so here we go.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Thank you, colleagues, for, uh, your ultimate support of Ms. Ayesha Jones. I lend you, uh, my fullest level of confidence. I believe, uh, under the municipal code, now that we have received a majority vote, it is my pleasure to, uh, officially appoint you to serve on the planning commission of the City of Palmdale. Congratulations.
Congratulations, ma'am. Uh, we look forward to your, uh, service on the planning commission. It's, it was important to, uh, fill that position tonight and not for some, uh, veto. Uh, to hold the city hostage perhaps for months on end. So, um, in the spirit of that, I, I believe the entire council has, uh, placed their support in you. And, uh, from what you said and from reading your application, uh, I think you're a great prospect, uh, to serve honorably in that position. Uh, the planning commissioner, the plan, the chairman of the planning commission is right over there, Mr. Henderson. If you guys don't know each other, um, you should, you should talk because your first meeting is tomorrow night.
Hey, you got a big night. You got a big night tomorrow night, so be ready.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Alright, item number, uh, seven point two. This is gonna be the, uh, we're gonna approve a reappointment. Of a public member to the Palmdale Recycled Water Authority, Zakiya Anson.
Who do approve her?
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Loa. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bettencourt. Go ahead and vote on the screen and post.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Alright. That takes us, item seven point three, discussion.
Well, before we do that, congratulations on your reappointment. It has been an honor to serve with you on the, the Water Authority.
Did you wanna say anything?
With dignity. Thank you so much for your, uh, desire to continue serving.
Thank you. Congratulations, uh, Mayor Bishop. Uh, just, just thank you guys. That went pretty fast. I couldn't get up here fast enough. Thank you all.
Appreciate your service.
You're doing a great job. Thank you. We have the utmost confidence in you. Alright, moving forward, seven point three. Discussion and possible action regarding city council standing committee appointments. Alright, so these are our committee appointments. They're revisited yearly. We often make changes to give council members a chance to serve in different capacities throughout the year. Um, so here we go. Let's go ahead and get to the page here. Yeah, we usually go down the list and, and say, so, uh, Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District. Alright, I would, I would like to continue serving on that. I've been on that for many years.
As, as would I.
I'd like to serve on that.
Okay. I have a Mr. Loa would like to serve, um.
Uh, I'm the, let me just articulate, um, to you as I think you're, uh, vice chair?
Yes, I'm the vice chair.
My vice chair of the, um, AVA QMD, uh, for, for the public certification, we are in the midst of, at the AVA QMD. Some significant litigation that has the, the potential to impact.
I don't, I don't think we need to get into the business.
But because I've been involved in that litigation, I would like to continue my service.
This, the business of the board doesn't have to do with the appointments, so let's please get through the appointments. Thank you.
It does support why I would like to continue my service.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna go and through and make the appointments regardless of what business happens on the board. So, I would like to continue to keep serving. Mr. Loa, you've, you've, have you had a chance to serve on the air quality management board?
Not before, no.
And you've been on this council many years?
I have and I was previously on there from two thousand one to two thousand five.
Okay, and you would like a chance to serve in this, this new term?
I would, yes.
Okay, I would like to support that. I'd like to give you a chance to serve on the air quality board.
Need motions on these?
We're gonna, we're gonna go through. Okay, so we're gonna go through all the different boards and then we'll make a motion in a second at the end to ratify everything.
Okay.
Okay, so how do we do that? I, I, I noted my, um, desire to continue serving, so we have three, um, uh, members who. Have expressed desire to serve on the AVA QMD, um, but there are only two delegate positions. If we do one motion at the end.
Would it be easier if we break these out individually and vote on them?
No. No, it would be easier for you guys to actually go down the list and state, say for instance, on the very first one, you have a delegate, a delegate and an alternate. So state who the delegate would be, who the next delegate, and then who the alternate would be. And we're gonna go through each one.
Okay.
Ms. Bettencourt's currently the alternate on, um.
Ms. Bettencourt, do you like to stay the alternate?
Yes.
And, uh, Richard, you'd like to go, uh, you'd like a chance to serve on air quality?
I would.
Okay. Do, are you okay with that?
I don't want it.
Alright. Okay, so as it stands right now, I've got Richard, gonna be a, uh, Loa, gonna be a delegate for the AVQMD. I'm gonna stay on as a delegate and we're gonna keep, uh, Ms. Bettencourt as a, uh, as a alternate for that board.
So how exactly is that working? Um, are you making appointments to all of these positions? Uh, historically and I believe through the code, they are voted upon by majority of the council and introduced by motion. I would just say, if, if, just procedurally, I would just like to get an understanding before we run through all of this and you strip me of all of the work that I've been doing. I would like to know the process by which you intend to do that.
Like I said, it's, um, these are different, various committee assignments that we all take turns getting a chance to serve our community.
I hear you. I would like to know the process because I've expressed, if, expressed my desire to continue serving on this board.
Okay, so the city, the city clerk said we can go by and do them as we go and vote on them. City, city attorney?
Uh, your traditional approach seems fine. You, you've indicated as chair, as mayor, uh, your selection. And as the clerk noted, when these are all tabulated, it'll be a group vote if there is objectional on the way, as with any motion. Um, that would be dealt with separately, but you do it as a group by tradition and, uh, knowing the clerk, uh, she's well-versed in it and often tells me if it's not broke, don't fix it. So I defer to her, but, but what you're doing is fine.
Okay. So let's go ahead and move forward with that.
So by what you're doing is fine, meaning you're just gonna select who sits on what? Is that what we're doing?
With the agreement of the council. We're gonna go down and we're gonna agree on which committees we wanna, we wanna work on together?
Well, and traditionally, the mayor sets the appointments for the actual action. That, that's the way it's done. Um, you've heard liability concerns, you've had a, a variety of issues that the council's consideration, uh, involves. And, and again, status quo's always good. If it's the council's pleasure to take them one by one, you can. It sounds like, according to the clerk, that'd be unwieldy, but it's the council's pleasure in these sort of procedural self-appointments.
It's okay, we're clear. I, I know what they're doing. They're gonna strip me of all of the work that I've done and you know, because you sit on that board with me. The work that I've done to support jobs and defending jobs in the Antelope Valley on that board. But if you wanna strip me of that one and all of them, we can run through the list. Let's go.
I'm not trying to strip you of anything, but to be completely truthfully honest and good faith, it's very difficult for me to support appointing you. To these boards until some of your personal legal issues are resolved. And I, I hope you can understand that. And if you were in my position, I, I hope you would do the same thing. But I'm really not, I'm really not trying to do that. And I'm, I'm really trying to give other council members a chance to serve in the community because we put you on a lot of boards your first year. We let, we gave you a chance to serve.
They were equally distributed, but that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, so we have Richard Loa as a delegate.
So this is AVTA?
Yeah, no, we're gonna say, we're gonna restate it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the air quality board. Richard has expressed interest in being a delegate. For the AVA QMD, I'm gonna stay on as a delegate. Council member Bettencourt is gonna stay on as an alternate. Do I have consensus from majority of council?
Yes.
I'd just like to, I'll, I'll go through these and for the record, note my objection.
Okay. Antelope Valley Transit Authority.
I'd like to remain as a delegate on AVTA.
Okay, council member Olson?
I would like to remain.
Council member Bettencourt?
I'll stay as an alternate.
Alright.
And I believe Ms. McLaren wishes to remain there as well.
Okay, so that's good for.
She couldn't be here today for personal reasons.
Okay, that's good for AVTA. Um, California Contract Cities Association.
I would like to remain as the delegate.
Um, I would like to, as the mayor, I would like to get a chance to represent the Contract Cities Association. I would like to, as the mayor, I would like to get a chance to represent the Contract Cities Association. Is that okay with my counsel?
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
Noting my objection.
City of Palmdale Audit Committee.
I'd like to stay as a member on that. I've been doing that for years.
Mayor, can we go back to, if I missed it, I apologize, the CCCA for an alternate?
Olson, are you going to remain?
Oh, Olson, do you want to stay as the alternate for-
Yeah, I didn't even know I was, did you get it?
Well, now you do. All right, so that takes us to the Audit Committee. Councilmember Bettencourt has expressed interest in staying on there. I want to stay on there as well. We've been on that for many years together.
And I'll serve as an alternate.
Okay, so we're good for that. City of Palmdale Investment Oversight Committee. That's going to go to the mayor, so myself.
Scratch me. Off I go.
Yep, Laura's off it. As mayor, I will take over that. And then we have member Eric Olson, you want to remain on that?
Sure.
Okay. EFI D Public Finance Committee. Myself is on that along with Mayor Pro Tem Richard Loa.
I'd like to remain there.
Okay.
And Laura Gordon is here. Laura, do you wish to remain on there?
All right, so that's good for that board. High Desert Corridor Joint Powers Division. We have Councilmember Olson as a Director and Mayor Pro Tem Loa as an alternate.
Yes.
All right, you guys are good to staying with that. All right, League of California Cities, Desert Mountain Division. We have a delegate, Alarcon.
I am the current delegate, and I would like to remain as the appointed delegate. Specific to that one, I would just like to make a comment. One of the things that I did that has gone unheard as the delegate for the California League of Cities on behalf of the City of Palmdale, when Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer was assassinated, it took us 72 hours to find the perpetrator of that murder, in part because we didn't have our Flock cameras up. I went to the League of California Cities after we stood at the press conference, press conference after press conference after press conference. I went to Sacramento during the League of Cities Conference. I met with the Government Affairs Director of Flock. I demanded, asked him, requested, begged, pleaded, and got him to move. He sent me, as soon as I landed back from Sacramento back to Palmdale, he sent me an email. I have it, we can do a public record if anybody wants to see it. He sent me an email, expediting, based on my personal request, expediting the installation of our Flock cameras so that we don't have unsafe streets and our Flock cameras were up within weeks.
All right, so-
You know, a point has to be made here.
Mr. Loa?
This matter came up as a budget issue to approve it. Ms. Alarcon voted against it. So, she may have done all of these other things later on, but she voted at it, and she voted against it when it counted.
When it counted, I got those cameras up.
Not trying to stir anything, but your activity violated both the Charter and the municipal code by stepping over the city manager and improperly inserting yourself into a business-
That is false, Mr. City Attorney, because-
No, it is not, ma'am. You're just making things up.
Do not yell at me.
Do not yell at me.
Do not speak out of turn.
Order in the chamber.
For a fact, Mayor, city manager and our deputy-
Ms. Alarcon, please.
Alarcon, our city manager and our deputy-
Ms. Alarcon.
City manager for public safety were both invited to that meeting. Were you not invited to sit in that meeting?
All right, we're going to go back, we're going to go back. We're going to go back, we're off topic. We are off topic. Let's go ahead and focus.
It was not a scheduled meeting. It was a presentation by Flock at League of California Cities at which time afterwards.
We are off topic. We're going to go back to the item at hand. We're going to go ahead. We're going to go, we're going to go back to making the appointments. California Cities, would anybody like to serve on that? Yeah, League of California Cities, the Desert Mountain Division Communities. Would anybody like to serve on that?
Friday is my day off, so I can't attend those meetings.
You can't attend those meetings? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bettencourt. And then I'll remain on as an alternate, and then we have a second alternate, which is Mayor Pro Tem Loa. All right. Los Angeles County Sanitation District.
Wait, so I just, for clarity, so you remove me from that one too?
Yes.
Got it.
All right, so we're moving on to the Sanitation District. So, that switches to the mayor per city code. So, I'll be representing districts number 14 and 20. We have the second delegate for District number 20, which is going to be Mayor Pro Tem Loa. And then we have an alternate delegate.
I wanted to remain on that.
What I'd like to do is not serve on this one.
Okay. All right, so you want to mix it up? Or do you want to go on as an alternate and then have Laura take the delegate position?
Right.
Okay, so we're going to put Ms. Bettencourt down for the second delegate for District number 20. And then Richard Loa will now be the new alternate delegate for District number 14 and number 20. All right, the NCTC, the North County Transportation Coalition. I'm on as a delegate. I would like to remain on.
Mayor?
Yes.
If there's an opportunity, I would like to serve on the Transportation Coalition as I'm already a member on High Desert Corridor and AVTA, and I would like to continue to focus on transportation.
Okay.
I am currently a member of the NCTC and would like to continue serving.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to serve?
Yes, I would like to serve on.
Okay.
I believe now I'm-
You're the representative at large.
Yeah. And as such, then it places me on Transportation Committee for SCAG.
Okay, so I'm going to recommend we move, at the request of Councilmember Olson, we're going to move him into the Business Representative position.
My position. Got it.
And then, for an alternate position.
How about if we have the city manager for that position?
Okay, we can have the city manager serve in that position, isn't the alternate? I believe that currently that's correct, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. All right, that takes us to the Palmdale Recycled Water Authority. I'm currently on that. We just appointed the public member, Ms. Anson. We have Ms. Bettencourt as an alternate. Is there a council member that would be interested in serving on the Palmdale Recycled Water Authority?
I used to be on that board. I'm not really sure how I got off that board.
Every year, we mix it up. This is uncommon for us to take different-
If you need me, I'm willing to serve.
Okay. So, we're going to move Councilmember Laura Bettencourt into the Director position for the Palmdale Recycled Water Authority.
My current position.
So, this is going to take us to SCAG.
I'd like to serve on that as a delegate.
Okay.
Mayor Bishop?
Yes.
In my position. Did we have the alternate on that one for the Palmdale Recycled Water Authority? So, we have Mayor Bettencourt that's going to the Director, and then you're Director on there, and then it looks like we need an alternate.
I'll serve as an alternate on that.
Okay, we're going to put Loa on that.
I was only called one time in like two years, so.
As an alternate, they're not going to serve as an alternate?
Yeah, there's only, there's only a few meetings a year for that one. Yes. All right, thanks for catching that.
Southern Conference Association of Governors, I'd like to on that.
Okay, and then also go ahead and stay on as alternate for SCAG. U.S. Mexico sister cities association. I am on as an alternate right now, but I love to serve as a delegate being the mayor.
And I'd like to remain as a delegate.
Okay. And then, I was told by our-
That would be in my position as well.
I was told by our city clerk, we don't need the third alternate, right? Okay, since it's kind of redundant since we have two delegates and we have two alternates.
Right.
Great. All right, so that takes us to the California State Prison, L.A. County Citizens Advisory Committee. Laura's the delegate, you've been on that for years, right?
Yes, yes, I have.
Okay.
I'd like to remain.
And Richard is going to stay on as the alternate. So, that takes us through our committee and board assignments.
Move to approve. As a resolution, all of the appointments that have been discussed.
All right, we have a motion to approve from-
Second?
Loa, I have a second from Ms. Bettencourt. May I get?
Start voting.
Vote. Please post one complete.
One more? We're missing one vote.
Mr. Olson, is that you?
I got it.
Okay.
Is it you?
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item number eight, reports and action items from mayor and council members. I believe we all filed our report. We did have a small video to show you from the previous year's events and so on and so forth. I think it's a really nice video that our PR team put together. It kind of shows you what we've done, where we've been, and where we're going. So, I hope you enjoy.
I haven't seen this yet.
It's new.
What a surprise.
We're just going to get that sound. We really do have a fantastic city. We have an excellent staff, and we really do have something to be proud of here in the City of Palmdale.
Mayor, we do have the mayor of our adjacent city of Lancaster, Mr. Rex Paris, here in the audience today. Can we recognize him? He's standing, he's in the back there.
Okay, that takes-
Mayor, can I highlight a couple of mine? I filed, but I just want to highlight a couple. I attended the Homes Families Veteran enrichment community. More veterans got houses right here in the City of Palmdale. As a veteran myself, I love it. I know that coming out of the service, you're not necessarily set with the income or ability to attain homeownership. But through Cal Vets and the Assembly Offices in the City of Palmdale, eight more veterans got homes, putting them on a pathway to sustainable development. I just wanted to highlight a meeting with Congresswoman Judy Chu. We're trying to get the Little Rock Dam Creek recreational area open again. So, hopefully, hopefully, she heard our plea and will help us in that fight. And December 26th, the Quanza event, it's actually a great time. It's educational, inspirational, and the second year I did it. Next year, I'm going to invite the rest of the council to go with me. It's something to experience.
I'd like to highlight a couple of things.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'd like to highlight the December 16th AVTA drive-through food and toy giveaway. That was a collaboration between City of Palmdale, well, AVTA, City of Palmdale, City of Lancaster. More than 2,000 vehicles came through at an average of three to four persons per vehicle, sometimes many more, children. There were probably eight or 9,000 persons who were served. Each one of the families received a turkey, toys, bicycles, and many other items. The City of Palmdale contributed 10,000. I believe that was the amount. Twenty? What was the amount contributed?
It was 40,000 per entity.
40,000 per agency to make that happen. There were a couple of hundred turkeys that were left over after all of the cars came through. There were a couple of hundred turkeys that came through, and AVTA donated those to the AV Fairgrounds toy and turkey gave away the following night at the AV Fairgrounds. And so, 200 additional families received turkeys at that event, which happened on December 17th, as well as the collaboration of many community groups to purchase toys, including Amigos de la Feria and many other groups, to give away to families that came through there. I want to point out that there were many needy families that came through on December 16th at the AVTA distribution. However, at the AV, at the event at the AV Fairgrounds following night, there were many persons who did not have vehicles that somehow caught rides to go there. And we got to see them face to face, and you could see the need in the family's faces and the children's faces. And when they received a toy, sometimes very simple little things, or the family received a turkey, you could see the gratification. It was amazing. The AVTA event is fantastic. We've done it now for several years. It will continue to go. The City of Palmdale will continue supporting that, and it helps thousands of families. But this other event is also very important and helpful. So, I'm glad that I participated in both of those things, and I felt that during the holiday season, we stood up for the community, and they responded.
Yeah, it was really something else. It was a spectacular, spectacular month.
Yeah, I just, I'm going to jump in. I, my report has been filed with the clerk. It wasn't noted on the agenda, but it has been electronically filed. I attended a total of 16 events, one which was referenced earlier this evening. I was the only council member to join a prayer vigil for the Admayan family who lost their young boy at the hands of road rage. It was a tremendous loss for this city, the Antelope Valley, and our entire community. So, it was an honor to represent the council at that event.
Okay, any other council members we'd like to talk about a little bit about last month? No? Okay, so we're going to move on to council action items. I want to throw something at our city manager and staff right now if I can get a quick update. Avenue R.
Lynn Glenn is here to give you an update on Avenue R.
Okay. The long-awaited completion of Avenue R.
Lynn is our Director of Development Services, yes.
Well, let's hear it.
So, good evening, mayor and council members. Avenue R, so per our agreement, per contract agreement, the actual completion date was about January of 2025. It was about an 18-month contract timeline. Right now, we estimate the completion date to be October 2024. So, although we did have a lot of unforeseen utility conflicts with storm drain, sewer, water, we have got everybody back on track. In the last three weeks, well, actually, January through, January 9th through January 27th, we will be installing the storm drain, continuing installation of piping, continuing with the sidewalk grading, forming and pouring curb and gutter, forming and pouring driveways, forming and pouring sidewalk. We have completed about 675 lineal feet of sewer line, 9,200 lineal, or lineal feet of streetlight conduit, pole boxes, streetlight foundations, and everything associated with the contract. To date, it's about a $12.5 million contract. To date, they've invoiced about $4 million, so we are on track to be able to finish it. With, once the storm drain is done, it's going to go a lot faster. The road will be, the K rails will be taken down, causing a little bit more, but we'll, the paving is easy compared to the underground storm drain, so.
Okay, thank you for the update. I asked the staff for the update because I know Avenue R has become a main thoroughfare for a lot of the community, especially in the morning, commuters, and there's two schools.
Right.
There's actually three, or there's multiple schools, actually.
Multiple, well, high school is affected, there's a private Catholic school.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I've been asked from people in the community, so.
Well, every month, I get an update for the, from our inspector on site, so I know exactly what's going on.
It's nice to know that there's light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment on that, that when we try to do development or improvements or any sort of changes in the city, there are a lot of different entities that can get in the way of that, including the water districts, the utilities. And I've heard some statements out of Edison recently that due to grid unsustainability, they're going to start limiting the projects that they approve. And that's very troubling. And so, we need to start thinking about ways that we can- And so we need to start thinking about ways that we can move around them and start providing energy ourselves. And I guess there's no real action item other than if we can get any comments from the city manager on the topic.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Olson. Yes, utilities continue to be a challenge. We work through the county and the state and the utilities to be able to provide for future development. In fact, yesterday, on the LA County Board of Supervisors' agenda, as motioned by Catherine Barker, Board Supervisor, actually, she's Chair Pro Tem, I believe, she authored an, authored an action to create a consortium up here in the Anlau Valley that will specifically look at capital improvements needed by the utilities and fire, specifically water, fire. I think we'd like to add SCE to that consortium and put together a real capital improvement plan for how we can address development going forward in our communities. I believe the city of Lancaster, the city of Palmdale, Anlau Valley East Current will sit on that water district, as well as Palmdale Water District, the county, Public Works, all of those entities. So I think we're moving in the right direction for a real strategic plan to be able to avoid any delays in development in the future.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in council? Seeing none? All right, that's gonna take us to item number nine. City Attorney Direction to Undertake Review in Municipal Violations Ruling to Conduct of Councilmember Alarcon. At this time, I'm just gonna ask the city attorney to take any and all administrative action to protect the city from additional liability and have a report back to council. Do I have any comments from council or consensus with direction to the city attorney?
I think that's the most appropriate thing to do at this point, is to have a thorough research of allegations, some of which are based on hearsay, others that are based on direct evidence by persons who've made observations. There may have been some, there may have been an arrest, there may have been some other, perhaps, citation. We don't know, because we don't have firsthand knowledge. And so I think that the city attorney making an investigation and giving us a fact-based report would be the appropriate thing to do. I don't think at this juncture we should have any kind of discussion that would, that would lead us anywhere that's positive, because we don't have the evidence. It's just not there. A lot of it is just hearsay and other kind of things, but we don't have firsthand knowledge of it.
Okay. City Attorney, do you have direction? Council, do you have any other comment?
I do. The emphasis will be fact-based, it'll, no opinion, no speculation. What we can support, we'll let you know what we can, we'll let you know.
All right.
Can I say something?
Yes.
To my colleagues, to all City of Palmdale personnel, to our law enforcement community, to the residents that I represent, to all of those that I've worked alongside in the community at food distributions, at, you know, trash pickups, at graffiti cleanups, jacket distributions. I apologize to each and every one of you. There is no question that I am thoroughly embarrassed. I feel, I know, I failed you, and especially our youth. I'm so sorry to each of you. It breaks my heart to know that I've disappointed so many. But I promise you this. I will fight for my life and for my recovery with the same vigor that I fight for my district and for our community. There are no words to express how touched I've been by those who, during one of the darkest times in my life, who've offered their prayers, their grace, their kind words of support. Your prayers continue to lift me up, and for that, I am eternally grateful. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for standing by me and for being here tonight. Slightly switching gears with regard to the action item tonight, I'd like to offer an explanation as to why I will be voting against it. What is being proposed tonight is that our city attorney investigate my conduct in the broadest of terms, without any real due process. And while I understand wholeheartedly that there may be consequences for certain of my actions, criminal matters have not yet been resolved, so disciplinary action at this point is premature. I also cannot support that Mr. Bill Curley be involved in any investigation. Since the time months ago when I voted against his several hundred thousand dollar contract increase and later voted against his permanent appointment to city attorney, Mr. Curley has persistently targeted and been hostile towards me. Mr. Curley's constant harassment over the past several months and animus towards me leaves me with zero confidence that he has the capacity to conduct an objective review of anything that pertains to me. So I just, I can't support any direction authorizing Mr. Curley to embark upon an unlimited investigation, especially in the absence of due process. These personnel matters can and should be resolved in closed session. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the law is well-established. Personnel matters regarding a council member cannot, under the Brown Act, be conducted in closed session. That, that's a 101-level issue, so no, that's not even on the table. Any interaction that the councilwoman speaks of was not started by me. There has been a number of complaints far exceeding, I've been doing this 42 years, and I've never seen something like this. So, yes, we are looking at administrative, we're not looking at criminal. Violations of the charter, violations of the municipal code, violations of city policy, violations of AV 1661, violations of AV 1234. They are there whether or not there's criminal activity, whether or not there's a DUI. And writing and clearing the air is important. As far as due process, you will get a report. Under your new policies, I am directed to do this. The policies that were adopted without the attendance of Ms. Alarcon. These policies then give the council the authority, upon viewing the evidence, to consider, and Ms. Alarcon will have all the opportunity to rebut, to dispute, to whatever she wants to do. There is no summary judgment. There is no filleting of somebody without an opportunity to respond. The fact that that is believed kind of indicates a lack of understanding of the process, but it is a fact-finding process that pulls together about a year's worth of issues. And it is important, it is important to the whole city, to the public, to the council, and to the staff. And so I'll leave it with that, that this is not any sort of impropriety or some poor, no due process. It will be a fully transparent process. So with that, you've done, I think, the right thing, and the world will know. And no, we cannot do it in closed session.
I think my point was simply that with your involvement, it will be a biased report.
Okay, so with that, do we need to vote on that, Mr. Curley? Or, or, does, does? We gave him direction, okay. All right, item number 10, City Manager's Report, Ms. Perez.
Mayor and council, over the last several weeks since we met, we had a very busy holiday season, welcoming our staff back on January, July, I think I'm going a little farther ahead, on January 2nd. Over that same timeframe, we provided the Saves Holiday Food Distribution and the Aero Toy Distribution, where 620 seniors received food through the Saves Holiday Food Distribution. Fifty seniors were adopted by city staff. This was something that was just a give of the heart of our, our staff members here at the city of Palmdale. Three hundred and seven households were provided with food, and 1,750 individuals were insured a meal this holiday season as a result of the efforts of Saves. And 1,100, oh, actually, almost 1,200 youth received gifts from Saves as well. Upcoming events include the desert cleanup in celebration of the MLK Day of Service. Make it a day on, not a day off, in the words of Martin Luther King. We have also assemble organic waste containers during the day of service. You can register to volunteer at either one of these events this Saturday, I'm sorry, this Monday, January 15th. You can look them up on our website. We'd also like to celebrate Justice Sunday Revisiting Black Wall Street. Saturday, January 20th, we'll be at our Palmdale Playhouse. We have a scheduled ribbon cutting for the Desert Sands Reimagined Playground on Tuesday, February 6th. And we are very excited to welcome SOS Children's Villages, now known as Together California, on their groundbreaking February 7th. For those of you that aren't aware, this is the reimagined or a new interpretation on foster care in the state of California, and it is groundbreaking, and Palmdale is where it is happening. The city also received a $50,000 grant from CalRecycle on a public education camp, for a public education campaign on recyclability. I already mentioned the supervisor's motion on utilities yesterday, but also wanted to note that carried forward yesterday again by Supervisor Barker was a motion on the Center for Transportation and Technology Excellence. We've talked repeatedly about this opportunity to be located a high-speed rail testing facility here in the city of Palmdale. Yesterday, with her motion that was overwhelmingly approved by the Board of Supervisors, it created an MOU to collaborate between Metro, the city of Palmdale, and the county on moving this project forward as fast and as efficient, as fast and as efficiently as possible. This stands to bring billions in economic development to our community and thousands and thousands of jobs, which gets our families off that freeway and increases our quality of life. So with that, that is, oh, one more thing, sorry. We also have submissions are open for the youth artwork for the second round of utility box covers. Love them or hate them, that's what art is all about, right? It gets you talking about things. So if you are a youth in the city of Palmdale, K through 5, we invite you to visit our website and be part of the next round of those box rubs. Thank you.
All right, excellent report. Thank you, City Manager. All right, that takes us to item number 11, Non-A agenda Public Comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Yes, Melody Garren.
Welcome. There's a button. Just takes a while.
I'm speaking on behalf of the educators of the Palmdale Aerospace Academy today, because when I got hired there six and a half years ago, I felt a sense of accomplishment and purpose to work for an excellent school that provided children in our community with a high-quality education and great job prospects. I am here today because I still believe that it's our mission and reason for existing to prepare, I quote, "students for college in a wide variety of careers in the science and engineering fields, at the same time providing a homegrown workforce for a wide variety of local high-tech firms." This council needs to know that in the past couple of years, our school has been increasingly unable to deliver on this mission and vision, and that the future quality of our students' education is in serious peril. In the past couple of years, our current leadership has been single-mindedly preoccupied with creating and staffing a district office that rivals that of Palmdale School District and Anto Valley High School District in size, despite us being one comprehensive site serving just under 2,200 students. Meanwhile, critical positions at our school are remaining unfilled. It is pointedly ironic that our STEM school only has one single credentialed STEM department teacher on site right now, and our school has been unable to offer courses in physics and aerospace engineering, among others, because of that. And across all departments, we have been hemorrhaging experienced and fully qualified educators and educational support staff at alarming rates. Forty-five percent of our teachers have resigned in the past three years alone, and the ones that still remain have been, or have been newly hired, have been struggling with insanely high workloads compared to other schools, not enough experienced and qualified principals and campus support staff to help them, and a working environment so antagonistic to the teaching staff that our input is rarely sought and our agreements is often ignored. Those of us that have stayed teaching at the Palmdale Aerospace Academy despite all of this believe that by working together, we can-
Thank you very much.
So before we-
We need your support. Can you please give your information to the clerk so that I can contact you later on?
Absolutely.
Can you get her information? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm shorter than Mel.
We'll give you the time to lower the podium.
I'm a lot shorter than Mel. Thank you. I'm shrinking as I age. Good evening, members of the Palmdale City Council, and to my mayor, who I think is still back there. My name is Cindy Carver, and I am the bargaining chair for the Palmdale Aerospace Teachers Association. On February 7th, 2022, our professional educator union was recognized by the Public Employment Relations Board. We got to work on the process for reaching our first collective bargaining agreement. Our first bargaining session with TPA management was on September 29th of 2022. We have spent over 120 hours bargaining with TPAA in 23 sessions over the last 15 months to reach 12 tentative agreements. However, we still have 17 articles where we have not reached agreement. While the Academy has provided responses to the outstanding articles, the responses are similar to the previous proposals, and we do not see your representatives agreeing to make any substantial changes. Our remaining focus for this initial contract can be summarized in the following five main areas. A clearly defined workday, work year with clearly defined duty expectations. A probationary period resulting in permanent employment status with a clearly defined discipline process that ends with binding arbitration. Competitive pay and benefits. A voice in the decision-making process, including professional development, protecting the rights of our bargaining unit members, including the enforcement of the contract through binding arbitration, retaining rights to our work product, limiting contracting out of our work, and security around the transfer and reassignment of our members. As members of the city council, each of you knows the importance of a settled contract. Tell your appointees that they need to make TPAA a better school and settle this contract with your professional education staff. Our bargaining unit does not want to wait another 23 sessions before a final agreement is reached. Our members and our students and our community deserve better. Thank you so much.
Catherine Hutzel.
I think this is gonna work for me, all right. Good evening, members of the Palmdale City Council. My name is Catherine Hutzel, and I am the treasurer of the Palmdale Elementary Teachers Association. The Palmdale Aerospace Teachers Association, known as PATA, is an affiliate of the Palmdale Teachers Association, and as such, we have a vested interest in the success of their initial contract campaign. We are all educators of students in Palmdale, and the educators of the Palmdale Aerospace Teachers Association deserve the same rights afforded to educators in the local areas across this state. Now, we are shocked and we are disappointed with the behavior of the city council appointees to the Palmdale Aerospace Academy Board. Why do they believe in educators in the Palmdale? Why do they believe the educators- Why do they believe the educators in the Palmdale Aerospace Teachers Association do not deserve job security, competitive compensation, a voice in decision-making, and the basic bargaining unit member rights? Now, the Palmdale Aerospace Academy was formed as a joint partnership between Palmdale School District and the Palmdale City Council. Now, as an elected representative of the certificated staff of the Palmdale School District, we need to ensure that the city council appointees to the Palmdale Aerospace Academy uphold the same shared values that we have established between the Palmdale Elementary Teachers Association and the Palmdale School District. On behalf of all the educators in the Palmdale Elementary Teachers Association, we are asking you make it known that we expect and demand that appointees settle this initial contract negotiation. Uh, do not create a second class educators.
Thank you.
Daniel.
There he is.
Greetings, council members. My name is Daniel Lago Marcino. I am the founder and lead site representative of the Palmdale Aerospace Teachers Association, the union that represents 95 educators at the Palmdale Aerospace Academy. We formed our union two years ago, and we are still fighting for our first contract. Throughout this process, we have been met with stonewalling, delays, and in, and a general lack of concern for the well-being of our staff. This is unacceptable. We are not asking for anything revolutionary in our contracts. We are simply seeking to gain what every other educator in Palmdale and in the AV receives as a matter of course for being educational professionals. We are seeking equal treatment to that of our peers in our profession, yet the delegates you have appointed to the TPAA Board of Directors continue to deny us this treatment, except for Pat Brophy, he's been great. Uh, this is unacceptable. We have been patient, but after two years, we need help. I am here today to ask that you demand that your appointees do the jobs that you appointed them to do and settle this contract. This council should not tolerate the fact that TPAA has created a second class of educators here in the Antelope Valley. Each year for the last three years, our school has lost 15% of its educators. They leave because other schools offer better pay, better working conditions, and more stability. The grass really has been greener for them. This council should not tolerate this. TPAA is the highest-ranked school in the AV, according to U.S. News, thanks to the work of our educators. The attrition threatens that and threatens the learning outcomes for our 2,000-plus students. We do not deserve second-class treatment, yet that is what we get. Please do not be complicit in this. Please speak to your appointees and demand that they settle a fair contract. We deserve it.
Abraham Salcedo.
Welcome. Hello. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go through and read, read a statement. I'm kind of disgusted by the whole situation that's happening with Andrea Alarcon. We see a whole lot, a whole committee, a whole bunch of people that are just, that, that love her, and she's leading them the wrong way. She's been, she's obviously hurt by her example, has not been living a right life, and now we have a bunch of people that are supporting her and trying to say that she needs to have forgiveness and this and that, but when you see the track record of everything she's done in the past seven months alone, it's, it's, it's unexplainable, and I thank you guys for, for, uh, taking her off on some of those committees. So let's, uh, let's follow the progression of our mayor pro tem, Andrea Alarcon, who represents District 5. This district came to pass because of a lawsuit from her employer, Kevin Shankman. Shankman is an attorney who made a name for himself and secured many large payouts suing cities across the state of California, alleging that their at-large election system diluted minority voting power in violations of the California Voting Rights Act. He has about, about 175 cases throughout California that he's already done, suing not only cities, water boards, fire departments, uh, you name it, he's done it. And, uh, then we go along to see a, a quote on the San Francisco Chronicle that Ms., uh, Ms. Alarcon says, um, so she was so struck by the impact of Shankman's lawsuit that she ended up joining his legal team, working with him in the new California Voting Rights Act. This is before she started running for a district that was created from the lawsuit that Shankman and, um, the mayor from Lancaster had joined in. Before 2023, she had two DOIs already and, and a case of child endangerment. In 2023 alone, with a span of seven months, she's had five infractions. Public intoxication at Los Originales, a local restaurant. She called in drunk to a city council meeting that she was at in New York.
Thank you. That's time.
Thank you guys for what-
Maricela.
Oh, that, this way.
Buenas noches a todos. Good evening, everyone. Antes que nada, les do las gracias por el tiempo de poder escuchar nuestras peticiones, se podrían decir así? Before anything, I'd like to, um, thank you for the time of allowing us to share our thoughts. Antes que nada, les pido respeto para todos. Before anything, I would like to, um, request respect for everyone. Yeah. Eh, con respecto a Ms. Alarcon- And in regards to Ms. Alarcon. Pienso de que el que esté libre de pecados que tiene la primera piedra- My thoughts are that everyone that's free from sin throw the first rock. Todos, todos podemos fallar algún día en la vida. Everyone fails sometime in life. Y se supone que si están trabajando- And if someone is working. Deberían de trabajar todos en armonía, amor y respeto. In harmony, love, and respect. Para que el trabajo sea más o menos y puedan seguir ayudando a la comunidad. For the work to be more productive and continued help towards the community. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Eugene Hernandez.
At the last, uh, city council meeting, uh, this council approved a vanity project about creating a film institute for that Antelope Valley. I very much concerned about this because Megan and the other woman who's, who, who heads, who wants to head this up, I don't think that they have the slightest bit of concern for the images that Hollywood produced on Chicano Latinos. Richard, you know that in our history, we've been omitted, misrepresented, and our history, our culture has never been shown. So I'm very concerned about these two women who have no cultural background regarding Latinos are gonna be heading up this vanity project. I would like you to establish a La- Latino Advisory Committee for this project, composed of Chirla, uh, Lulac, A- Antelope Valley Green Party, and also a Salva to advise whatever projects that is gonna be proposed for the Antelope Valley that they really represent the 63% Latino here. Because I would hate for these two girls to make a surf fulfillment in the Antelope Valley. I, I think it's vitally important for this council to have the sensitivity that if Hollywood wants to come up here, they, they make a movie representing us and not defaming us. Also, I'd just like to thank Laura Bettencourt for her term as mayor. I think you did an excellent job. You were very fair, and I really appreciate your effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker.
Marco Salvariz.
Is he still here? Okay. Should we go to the next speaker and then, uh?
Nancy. Nancy.
Hello, my name is Nancy, and I just came here for, to just talk to Andrea, but she's not here right now, but hopefully she can hear me. Everybody's just really attacking her, and yes, she made tons of mistakes and whatnot, but, oh, no one's thinking about her well-being, and, um, I'm thinking about her well-being, and I'm keeping her in prayer, and yeah, you guys can judge me and whatnot, but we've been in some other circumstances, dark circumstances, and we don't have that light like she has it. And Andrea, if you hear me or whatnot, keep on going, whatever the circumstances come out. You have a purpose. I see what you believe in. I see your vision. But you gotta take care of yourself first. That's it.
Annabelle Farmer. Annabelle Farmer. David Harris.
Good evening. Um, I had the opportunity to visit, uh, the campus there at the Aerospace, uh, School, and it is just beautiful, so to hear the faculty there not getting what they need is, is not good, but, uh, um, I mean, I, I came up to say, Laura, thank you for your service. It's, it's been, uh, a good road and a hard one, uh, on all fronts, and, uh, so thank you. Um, Austin, uh, Mayor Bishop, now. Yes, Mayor Bishop, yeah. Thank you for your words today at the luncheon. I had the opportunity to attend the, uh, chamber luncheon today where all the chambers came together, and what you talked about as unity within the Antelope Valley, uh, bigger than just Palmdale, and I think, uh, that's the type of leadership we're looking for. And, uh, your words and, and sharing that project that's coming up, I won't steal any thunder, but, uh, no, 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 that's you, that's all you guys, um, but, but thank you. You represented us well. And I also was very proud that, uh, being a business here and a nonprofit business that holds a business license in the City of Palmdale, I was very proud to see Sarah and Nadia and Rhonda there at the table, uh, representing Palmdale very well. So, um, that's it. I, I wish you luck in this great journey of picking up the, the mantle, and I look forward to working with you on future projects, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Laura Gordon.
Hey, you were at the Chamber Luncheon.
I was at it too. Laura Gordon, resident of Avenue R, Avenue R, that's very affected by it, that's what I refer, but, I wanna say the city staff has done more than their fair share of making sure that the idiots that drive down Avenue R know how, what a left hair-and-turn lane is and a straight line is. So we can't fix stupid. But what I'm really here for today is to talk about Walk a Mile, which is gonna be in October. Someone got a really late start last year, and she promises, promised your city staff she wouldn't, um, do that again, so I am starting to promote Walk a Mile. It is Walk a Mile in her shoes to hope, help end the domestic violence. When I said it last year, I wished that it wouldn't be our 10th anniversary. I'm wishing it would be our first anniversary of it being gone, but we can't do that. So we really want to, um, promote Walk a Mile this year. The City of Palmdale has been our partner for the past two years. We're looking forward to the City of Palmdale being our partner again here at Ponsonon Square. And I do have, um, sponsorship forms and information forums for tonight, and we got our first sponsor tonight, so. What is the date of that, Laura? October 26th, Saturday. Thank you. It's the day before, um, trunk or treat. Okay. So, thank you very much.
So you can walk, burn off some calories, and then go-
Four times around, um, but that's the day before.
Right, and then you get some candy the day after.
The next day and eat- Eat the candy.
Yeah, use as much candy as you want.
Earn those calories.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's four times around Ponsonon Square, um, uh, Assemblyman Lackey has been our only walker to walk nine years. Wow. And, um, so he is our, he's our biggest supporter of the program behind the City of Palmdale, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Ruth Sanchez.
Good evening. Um, I thought I was coming just to actually congratulate you for your new position, but, um, I didn't miss the commotion. I got to listen outside, and with that being said, I just wanna say I don't condole what happened, um, or what, you know, what the, um, pro tem did. You know, we are talking about people's life, however, I just wanna say that everybody that is here, in one way or another, we care about the city we live. Whether we agree or disagree, we do care. But I know for a fact, some of you out there also have some of those records, 'cause I have pulled them out. So let's just think about that as well when we're passing judgment on others. But with that being said, um, I just wanna invite you guys to our new location that we have, and that's gonna be January 20th. We're doing the, uh, Dia de los Reyes, which is gonna be all the kids can go ahead and get their toys, um, but we're also doing the MLK Celebration, and it's gonna be at 208, uh, Pillsbury in Lancaster. So if you guys would like to join us, uh, that would be great. And, um, you know, just again, congratulation, and I just hope that we can move forward. And again, many of us here, you know, we, we have different beliefs, but in reality, we do care about our city that we live in. So whether we agree to disagree, just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Next speaker.
Vicky Ventura.
There she is. Hey, you were at the Chamber today too.
I think so, right? Now, um, good evening, City Council. Austin, Mayor Austin Bishop, I forget used to that, right? I, we've known Austin for a long time, but Mayor Austin Bishop, congratulations. We're so proud of you. And you represented the City of Palmdale really well earlier today at the State of the Chambers Luncheon. You witnessed a historical event where a few chambers came together and collaborated and brought, you know, the, the City of Palmdale, the City of Lancaster together. Um, Eric, I know you wanted to be there but couldn't be there. Um, I hope that, you know, we see you, Mr. Richard Law, next year there, and Laura, I wanna thank you for all of the support.
I had, you know what, this year has been extremely, uh, my time has been extremely constrained, so I had to spend the, that hour at my office. I would have loved to have been there.
Okay. I think you weren't spared there.
Freeze up next year.
Okay. All righty, we'll make sure that we-
I support what you're doing. I support what the mayor said.
We appreciate you. We appreciate, I love you, the attended. Um, you know, moving forward, we hope that we could collaborate more with other chambers and other organizations, and also the cities, that we would have the support for the Antelope Valley Chamber of Commerce, 'cause when we come together, we could do a lot more, especially for the small business community. We advocate for the small business community. We all say that the small business are the backbone of the economy, so let's show it, show us some love, you know, me financially or, I don't know, right? But we look forward to working with you. Mayor Austin Bishop, thank you so much. We appreciate you and congratulations. Thank you so much for your support. Love ya.
Thank you, Vicky. All right, next speaker.
Rich Gallego.
Hello again. Um, I just wanted to say a word about this word accountability that I have heard thrown around a little bit tonight. Um, I've seen too many politicians stand before too many podiums and say things like, "I take full responsibility for my actions." And they say this as if uttering those words alone absolves them of what they've done and means they're being accountable. It does not. Accountability means suffering the consequences of those actions. And I, I understand that there's a segment of our community who thinks that Ms. Alarcon is their champion, and for that reason, perhaps, they wanna keep supporting her. Interesting that that same group has advocated for lesser alcohol sales on the east side, and somehow they don't see her alcoholism as a problem. But mainly, I wanna make sure everybody understands, you don't just get to say, "I take responsibility," and that's it. The rest of us, if we break the law, we are held accountable. And frankly, I'm tired of a multi-tiered justice system. I, look, I pray with all my heart that Ms. Alarcon gets her life under control, and she gets her health reestablished. It's, it's really a waste. I don't agree with her politically, but it's easy to see that she's a smart, sophisticated person. She's very capable, and quite frankly, it's a waste seeing what she's doing with her life. But what I don't want is for her to have any say over the governance of the city that I pay taxes and live in. There must be real accountability, not some facade. Thank you. There must be real accountability, not some facade. Thank you.
Alright, next speaker.
Mayor and Council, I would call these names to again, Annabelle Farmer and Marcos Alvarez.
Okay, Annabelle and Marcos. You guys uh are they outside? Alright, Mario, come on up. Where's Nardi? There she is.
Siendo un hijo de inmigrantes viviendo en Palmdale, mis padres y mis papás y yo representan el veinticuatro por ciento. De ciudadanos que no se nacieron en esta comunidad.
Being a child of immigrants living in Palmdale, my parents and my family represent twenty-four percent of the foreign, I'm I'm, oh yeah. I'm translating for it. Foreign-born citizens in this city.
Que es tres trece por ciento más alto que la average nacional.
Which is thirteen percent higher than the national average.
Um es horrifico que solamente de uno de uno de los dos hispanos en el Consejo Municipal. Fue arrestado en Glendale por manejando borracha.
It is appalling that one of the only two Hispanics on the council was arrested in Glendale for drinking and driving.
Mi familia sufrió un perdido de uno miembro de nuestra familia. La noche del Dia de Gracias por consecuencia de un borracho. Y yo tengo este cosa bien serio.
My family suffered the loss of a primary income earner on the eve of Thanksgiving to a drunk driver, so I take this issue seriously.
Siendo un estado, estamos mejor a a bajar los choques fatales. De dos dos mil diez.
Dozen.
Doce a veintiuno.
As a state, we are doing well to lower vehicles fatalities from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one.
Pero para los borrachos ha un subido de treinta y tres por ciento a treinta y ocho.
However, fatalities increased from thirty-three percent to thirty-eight percent.
Cuando se vuelven con alcohol.
When alcohol is involved.
Los manejadores de Palmdale pasan cuarenta minutos al día yendo al trabajo y sient- setenta por ciento. Manejan solos.
Palmdale drivers spend an average forty minutes a day commuting to work and over seventy percent of them drive alone.
La señora Alarcón se puso borracha atrás de un vehículo. Después de firmar este papel indicando que ella puede ser cargada con mu- mu- la muerte. Si ahí eh si era por accidente, mata otra persona.
Councilwoman Alarcón normally got behind the wheel of a vehicle intoxicated after. Signing state bar paperwork indicating that she can be charged with second-degree murder if she accidentally kills another person.
Este pone la ciudad en un predicamo bien terrible porque si está yendo a un lugar. Que siendo un representante de la ciudad y se choque y mata a una persona, nosotros somos responsables.
This puts the city in a very terrible position if on her way to a city-sponsored event, she is involved in an accident and kills someone.
Okay, Palmdale es una comunidad que cuando uh que las casas solamente toda la casa. Gana setenta y cinco por uh mil dólares.
Palmdale's a thriving community where the median household income is seventy-five thousand.
Si uno de estos padres um que normalmente a hacen tres tres treinta y cinco mil. Se matan en un accidente, ese afuerza toda la familia abajo de la nivel pobre.
Should a primary earner who on average makes thirty-five thousand be killed in an accident, this would force the entire household below the poverty level.
Este es un incidento bien grave. Tómalo serio.
This is a terrible situation. Please take it seriously.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Denise Verduzco.
Hi. Good evening, fellow members. Um congratulations, um Austin Bishop. Thank you for what you do for the community and even with the signs and banners. You know, I am a soccer mom, so I totally appreciate that, but um I really wanna come up here and just speak from the heart. You know, I am, I I hate using this, but I am Mexican, dual citizen. I have my Mexican citizenship. I have my American citizenship. And I'm just so sick and tired of the narrative of, I don't want the Latinos that have come up here and speaking on behalf of Andrea. To be the only Latino voice that's speaking, because that's not okay. There is other voices out here that don't agree with the behavior. Coming from a Hispanic household, if my mom caught me drinking and driving, do you know what would have happened to me? I would have gotten in the chancla. I would have been spained. I would have been put on timeout. I would have not been able to go anywhere, like. There would have been consequences. So to see the hypocrisy of these same Hispanic people come up here and pretend that there shouldn't be any type of accountability. Goes to show that there's a special investment, like a special interest, right, for them. So I just wanna make sure that you guys hear both sides of the token. It is very sad as a wife, as a mother, as a Hispanic woman. To see somebody like this being represented on the council is not a representation of me or the constituents of Palmdale. I do believe there should be accountability. I do pray for Andrea Alarcón. Clearly, uh we all need it, right? We're not saying that she can't serve. What we're saying is that until she's ready to serve. As a mom, if my kids are not equipped, if they're not ready to go onto the soccer field or wherever, if they're not prepared, I'm not gonna place them there. So why are we putting people in position who are not equipped to do their job? And it's nothing personal, it's just, it's business. So with that being said, at the end of the day, I just wanted to make sure that my voice as a Hispanic woman was heard. Thank you.
Mike V.
Good evening, um and congratulations and all of our bank court, I'm sorry. I appreciate everything you've done and I I think you've been pretty fair and, you know, you listen to your people and all that, so thank you for that. Um just wanna reiterate the accountability part of it, of, you know, Ms. Andrea's uh actions or, you know, this whole situation we're in. Um you know, a lot of people are saying everyone deserves a second chance, but clearly, if you look at the history, you know, chance one was the first DUI. After that, that's your second chance. We sat the other instances, so how many more chances, right? As a city official, as a lawyer, you you should be held to a higher standard. You're you're representing the city. We don't know if, you know, okay, this is the incident you got caught in, but you know, when you're in meetings or whatever. Are things being discussed that shouldn't be discussed because you're a little bit altered? We don't know, right? But still, you should be held at a higher standard, you know, um Eric Olson, you mentioned being a veteran. As a veteran, you get a DUI. I know I would have lost my rank. I know I would have gone through some crazy stuff for, you know, being a veteran and and getting caught with DUI. Why why is it any different for being a city member? Like, it's it's a higher standard. You know the law. You know what the do's and don'ts. I know my drivers as well, if they got a DUI, they're not drivers anymore. There's repercussions for all your actions. So we we can't just look to the side. We can't just, you know, downplay this. A city official, a lawyer, held to a higher standard. You should know better. Uh you know, let's let's not downplay this, you know, this, we have too many lawsuits in the city of Palmdale. We don't need more. We don't need more. You know, what's the headline gonna read? City council member causes this, a city council member does this. It's not just Andrea Alarcón. It's the city of Palmdale. What's gonna happen to the city and what are the repercussions of those actions? So let's not downplay this. Let's let's keep it going. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, no more speaker cards on this item.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Oh, was there a couple of people outside?
No, there's a lady here.
Anybody else? Okay, just you? Okay, come on down.
My name is Kelly Dursy and I'm the wife of John Dursy, an Air Force veteran and teacher who was terminated in twenty twenty. By Learn for Life School located in Palmdale. My husband was unfairly fired for emailing information to parents about the coronavirus. In my opinion, Learn for Life used this as an excuse to fire John. Because of his documented medical condition. Learn for Life's actions have demolished my husband. Whose mental state has spiraled down from depression to now being hospitalized and on a twenty-four-hour suicide watch. Sorry. Later, I was told that this kind of termination has happened previously. Margaret Sensano, another teacher, was terminated after administration learned she had cancer. She died shortly after being fired. Currently, Learn for Life has multiple lawsuits filed against them. That include racial discrimination, harassment, retaliation, and lack of accommodations. And also my husband's lawsuit. In addition, I was also told about articles written in USA Today. The Washington Post and the Voice of San Diego about Learn for Life obtaining over thirty-seven point two million dollars. In PPP loans, even though California never cut funding for charter schools during the pandemic. So it would seem implausible that the Palmdale City Council would be unaware of at least some allegations.
Okay, one more.
Palmdale City Council does not investigate Learn for Life. It will reinforce what I was told. That Learn for Life owns the Animal Valley politicians. If John does die, it will not only be Learn for Life's fault, but also because the Palmdale City Council did nothing to help one of their constituents.
Thank you. Alright, do we have any other speakers out there? Anyone outside that would like to speak or anybody in the room? Seeing none? Okay.
That's it. I'll speak right quick. Um I know somebody's excited back there, it sounded like. But I think you guys definitely need to invest or look into getting a larger building and um. So this is Andrea's recent quote from an email to the LA Times. Without question, I understand the severity of my actions and I apologize immensely to all those whom I've disappointed, especially my family. My colleagues and my constituents. For me, this has been a lifelong battle and it's difficult time. In this difficult time, recovery is my sole priority. Sole. And then and then you're upset that they all kicked you off every single board. I I'm grateful that you did do that. I actually am disdainful with you that you went outside for thirty minutes to talk to China Rex. You straight left the meeting for thirty minutes, girl. There's a meeting still going on. Are you a council member or are you part of Rex? Honestly.
This way.
Do you have you have business with the council and the constituents or Mr. Rex is more important than what's going on for the district you represent? Let that one sink in. So with that, I do hope that you do get the recovery that you need. Honest honest to God, I'm telling you right now. I've been sober for many a time. Drinking does face consequences. You just learned that it kicks you off every single board you represented, okay? Uh the company that I used to be employed with with security clearances, same thing like this guy back here, Mike, losing rank if he were to get one. If I already get a DUI and I had security clearance, guess what? My ass is grass. We don't we don't do this sugar coat like, oh, I'm an attorney, oh, I'm a this, I'm a this, my dad's so-and-so. No. You you face consequences like you did with all the rest of them. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? One more?
First of all, I wanna say thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate each and every one of you. But what I will say is if you're a leader in the city, you are held to higher accountability. We cannot lead. When we're not being good stewards of what we've been given. And our job as leaders is to protect the citizens of our city. And drinking and driving does not protect the citizens of our city. And I wanna say one more thing. Coming from a household with a father who's an alcoholic. I do not touch alcohol. And I know that there's some people that came up here and said. You know, some of you have done the same thing. I'm a leader of the city and I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't touch alcohol. And I don't touch it because I've seen how it destroys people's lives, families, and cities. And as a leader, you do have to be responsible for the lives of the people of the city. That's the oath that you took and you have to stand by that. It doesn't matter who you are, what you do, your family background. Every life matters. Every single life matters. And as a leader, we have to stand and love the people of this city. That's our job. We are to serve the people of this city before we serve ourselves and our desires and our wants. It's a sacrificial position. And as I'm talking to you, I would like for you to look at me as I talk to you. That's called respecting somebody's opinion, whether we agree or not. Thank you so much.
Alright, do we have any other speakers? Seeing none? Okay, so that's gonna conclude our meet meeting. I wanna thank everyone that came out tonight to speak. I know we have a lot of different opinions and uh we have a lot of different, you know, we stand on different sides of the aisle, but I think we can all agree. At the end of the day, we care about the city of Palmdale and we care about each other and ourselves and we just want the best for everyone in this city. So with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting uh to January twenty-fourth, uh January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, five PM. Right back here in this council chamber. Thank you all and have a safe uh night getting home. This meeting is adjourned.